No, no, that's worse than ours. I wouldn't tell that. I don't even mind.
Yeah.
It was raining.
Oh, it was raining.
Yeah, yeah, it's not been so long.
What happened to Peter from the council? Yes. Oh, really?
Yeah, first, something happens.
That's all right. Do the quickness come in. Very.
What's happening there?
Good morning, Paul, you know, Mark.
How is it?
It's one of them. It's like every movie I know.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Sorry about that. I had a meeting once tonight. I'm like, it's too early to have a meeting. Well, I know you're in a.
Two more weeks.
I know, yeah. Yeah, I thought it was Wednesday.
Bittersweet. Traffic's already advised.
This is the contracting, I tell you, that I need to back it up. Because I got a sign that's just, it's an absurd, but that's just it.
Yeah. You guys need a copy of this wedding?
I, I read it.
Pretty simple.
Pretty short and sweet. Yeah, I have it. Yeah, thank you.
I read everything in the packet. Was it in the packet?
Uh, no, no, it came out.
About two or three years ago. Pretty short.
Hey, everybody, uh, instead our cell phones are muted or turned off and join me in pledge. Bill will open the meeting at seven. I got six fifty-nine. But my thing is, you're the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which they is one nation, under God, indivisible. Oh, call recognition of visitors.
And Greg Bradley?
Yeah.
Albert Keys?
Yeah.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Christine Johnson? Go in child.
Signing sheet and, and one individual on leave?
Yes.
Disposal complex. And I have none. I have none. Approval of the agenda. I have basically a couple of notes to make. On our reports, fire department. The Rapid River. Fire coverage, EMS coverage contract needs to be discussed. Greg will handle that. And evidently, um, we have a fax line disconnected that is required by the fighter button. And, uh, the bill for that. There's about fifteen hundred bucks. So Eric emailed me this morning. And I want to add that to the agenda. This is for you. Essential for, uh, evidently response call. Okay, so, uh, under the fire department, uh, Rapid River contract discussions. And approval of, uh, the fax line correction for the fire department. Uh, basically under fire department report. So we'll deal with both of those at that point. Anybody have anything else?
I saw in the parks, um, Tim Lund's was mentioned, but it's not mentioned on our agenda. The, the hiring of Tim Lund by parts.
The what?
Tim Lund, the hiring for him to maintain.
Uh, I thought I could have done.
It's, I saw in the paper.
Oh, I had it. Hmm.
I think it's, um.
No, Aaron's Ball Field. Aaron's Ball Field maintenance and the DNR trees maintenance. Is under, uh. Uh, basically parks and recreation. Okay, so we'll discuss it at that point. Also have of the ordinance which we're. Going to get into with the zoning administrator. Uh, under zoning administrator report, um. The parks organs. Okay, anything else? Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Aye.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second. I thought so.
Okay. Want to comment? When I want to see twice. Yes, sir.
Will we be allowed to speak to some of the leirides of the agenda?
Uh, yes, if you're recognized by the chair and it doesn't turn into a debate, yes. Okay, uh, guest report special order of business. It's, uh, Grand Valley Marine here.
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Noel from Grand Valley Marine down here in, uh, Alden. I don't know if any of you really know too much about it, but, uh, Alden's Port of Rain's been there since the mid nineties. Um, nineteen ninety-eight, uh, we started doing kayak and, uh, stand-up paddle rental side of that location. Hank Ringlever was the owner of the Alden's Port of Rain at that time. About eight years ago, I started working with Hank, uh, because he was talking about retiring. And, uh. About a year or two after that, I ended up purchasing the property from him and then in twenty twenty, uh, Hank finally retired and then I took over completely. Basically, we've been doing, uh, parts and accessories, boat repairs, boat storage, kayak rentals, paddle rentals. Um, again, been there since, since the mid nineties. We. We do a ton of kayak rentals in the area and we do, uh, quite a few different types of rentals. Um, we deliver to all of the local lakes in the area, whether it be, uh, Elk Lake, Torch Lake, Lake Miller, or Clam Lake, Skegma. Um, people who are summer customers, um, vacationers or whatever. And we rent them, uh, by the day, by the hour, by the week, by the weekend. Um, some of the customers that we have, uh, obviously if they come up here and they don't have their own pickup to, to take the kayak wherever they want to go. Um, we'll, we'll take them down to the lake for them. So we do all of our business, obviously, at the store and then, um. Whether they want to go to Burst Street and usually they do because it's the closest, but we do take them to other launches as well. And they, they'll just tell us or request us that that's where they want to go. Um, again, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight and, um, here's how we ended up here today. Uh, about a month ago, somebody apparently rented the pavilion that was down there. And on that particular day, um, we, we actually had one customer that was parked down there on the pavilion side of the street. And, uh, there, it was a busy day. There was a lot of people. Um, and our customer, along with just four or five people from the public. Um, were saying that there was a lady telling everyone that they could not park there for the day. That, that she rented the gazebo and nobody could park there. That was her part for the day. And basically how we got involved is we just went over to talk to her and we said, look, um. I don't think that's quite the case. If you run at the pavilion, that's great, but I think all the public is still able to use this park. I think that you can throw everybody out of here. And there was, you know. She incurred that that was the case, but anyways, we just let, let it go. And that's how our name came up. Um, apparently she had said that, you know, the kayak rental company said that, you know, she came over to talk to them. That's how our name came up. And apparently that she called you and complained that there was people parking there or whatever, um, just so everybody knows, we have one car out there. And there was probably thirty cars, you know, from John Q Public at the park that day. Um, but at any rate, um, that's how our name came up. And then somebody said, well, you can't rent there. You can't put your rentals in there. So I don't really know exactly what we have to do. Um, again, we don't go there with every customer. Um, we, we go a lot of different places. Um, a lot of people just like that one because it's convenient. It's the closest to our store. At this point, when a customer does come in and they want to go to the closest access point or to that point, again, we just do our paperwork. And this, if, if they're, if they're driving a vehicle, they can drive down there, walk down their bike down there, wherever they do. And then we bring the kayaks down there. They take them, put them in the water. And when they're done with them, they call us. We just go back and pick them up for them. So technically all we're doing is delivering them back and forth. And apparently that's not allowed. So we're just trying to find out what we have to do to rectify this.
Okay, so are we. Um, I really, this, this has gone round and round with zoning. The office administrator, uh, you've been doing this for quite some time.
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, like I told you in an email, um, just because of the ordinance hadn't been enforced before, disobedience, unenforced. But there are problems with this. And I'm glad you pointed this out because we have to resolve this issue. So this will be on the discussion. When the zoning administrator comes up and gives us a report. As it stands right now, amendment due to ordinance twenty subsection four shall read, no commercial canoe, kayak, livery, or any other non-motorized business shall use any public access site or dump it part for commercial use unless by special permit. There is no special permit for such, for such a deal. So special use permit would be. Advisable in the interim. Here's the other problem. It's August fifteenth. Okay, I would imagine after Labor Day, your kayaks could probably put the best.
Yep.
So the other question that we're going to have to address is if you're going to use Burst Street. How to handle that? In other words, you make all your sales out of the office. Somebody walks in, rents a kayak or six. Okay, you take them down to Burst Street, dump them off all there. So we have to figure out. Hey, how to handle that for a rental thing because if we issue a permit. And you're making, you're a commercial business, there will be a fee for the permit. Okay, but if you're operating out of your office and at nine oh five. You get a customer walks in, wants kayak all day. And you don't have a permit to use that. For that day. We have to figure out how to accommodate that and what to charge you for the rent. So that'll be addressed. Probably won't go into effect until next year. But, um, that's on the agenda. I'm glad you showed up and I'm glad we had a, a conversation earlier. Uh, so I could understand the situation. But anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. Now that, uh, somebody has gone into detail about this, a couple of questions. Why aren't you using the boat launch?
Um, we do, you know, where basically we, where the customer wants to go. A lot of time, I would say probably fifty percent of the time, people just take them and they go wherever they want to go. But if they drive a passenger car, they obviously can't put a kayak in the back of the passenger car and they'll say, well, we want to go to Alden. Or we want to go to the Sandbar, or we want to go to Burst Street or wherever, you know. A lot of these customers that we have up here are previous customers who have been doing this so long.
So, so you can use a boat launch. You just go by what the customer wants.
Sure. We bring them wherever the customer wants.
The only problem I see with this is you're not the only person renting, uh, kayaks, canoes or whatever. And you, as this business is growing. More companies are going to want to do the same thing and we can't show favoritism. To any one person and maybe you've been doing it for a long time, but I would imagine that the need or the want wasn't as great back then as it is now. Uh, being that, uh, the lake is very well known, uh. I just don't know where you're going to stop and start. That's, that's mine.
Our, our, I can just tell you, in the last ten years, um. Our, our customer base is steady. So our, our figures, I, I go by dollars right on how many people we use, but our dollar figures have been steady through about ten years. Um, we've had a couple of ups and a couple of downs, but they're, we're generally in the same ballpark.
Well, since we've been part of Adelaide Antrim. Now, um, as, as your business increased since then and. I mean, there is a boat launch.
Really gotten much into that.
There is kayak launch at Lake Street. There's a kayak launch at, uh, on, uh, Arwood Trail. Where we down at the end. But, uh, I can understand somebody wanting to. Launch at Burst Street just specifically to go to the Sandbar.
That's generally why they go, that's why they go there, yes.
And what they need, your customer need is a place to park. Basically, you're asking about a parking within anything.
Let me, let me ask the question. I've been trying to figure out what to do with these pontoon rentals. Would a van with a trailer hitch? And a trailer full of kayaks, they're shuttling clients to and from, dab workers?
Oh, yeah. In, in fact, we do shuttle some customers if they want, if they want to ride with us for sure. Because right now we have a cart. And, 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 yeah, and, and a lot of the customers, we've, in the last couple of years. Simply because of the parking, that, that park has gotten busier in the last probably four years, that, that part. We've seen. Definitely increase in use in that part in those little years. So. We actually do a lot of the times request them if there's multiple cars. And again, we don't have that very often, but when we do. Let's say we got somebody that's coming in with six people. Generally, we have two people at a time. That's, that's our most common rent. But if we have like six or eight or something like that, uh, we tell them, carpool down there. You can leave your cars right here in our parking lot. Because we have plenty of parking. Um, so we do that just simply because there might not be parking down there.
Right. Well, the other thing is too, I'm trying to. Figure out how to. Correct this. And accommodate. You, not only you, but, um. We've got a, you had a festival going on over here. We have carnivals. We have. You know, Halloween parties, people involved.
And then we do this to rent the pavilion. And I'm not sure what our rental agreement says, but I do believe it is the entire area that they rent.
Right.
Just the pavilion.
There's a sign down there that says overflow parking for, for street access stall. Yeah, okay. We're part of the problem. Okay, so signage is a problem too. All right.
So I have to look at the rental.
Here's, here's the deal. Any amendment we made to this. Okay, takes thirty days to go into effect anyway. So if we hand it to the planning commission with some suggestions to fix this thing. Okay, they get it back to us on the September nineteenth, which is our next meeting, and we approve it. It doesn't take effect for thirty days anyway.
But you're looking for a, a permit to finish out the season, is that? Okay.
Okay, so my suggestion is at the moment, um. Unless there's a conflict. With a rental. Maybe, uh, we should just email you and let you know that so-and-so has rented this space at, at the moment. Because I have no idea what, what kind of fee for a permit because. Different functions, okay, would have different commercial values. Okay, if we had a carnival come here, what do we charge them? I mean, uh, you know, they're operating four or five, uh, food trucks and six or seven rides. All right, you're operating a couple, maybe six kayaks. Um, so this is going to take some time to figure out and come up with something that's equitable, not only to the people that are renting that pavilion. Or a birthday party or just a picnic. And to accommodate you too, so. Anyway, thanks for coming and we'll get to this when we get to zoning. We'll go over the ordinance. Right now, as it stands, no commercial canoe or kayak livery, uh, basically is banned from the park. So. Unless we get a special use permit. I don't know if we want to, uh, go that route. What do you think, John?
Well, it says in our ordinance that there is a special permit, so we have to address that. So we.
Okay, so my suggestion would be, uh, to, uh, allow Grand Valley Marine to continue using the overflow parking as designated by the sign on Burst Street. For the remainder of the summer while we fix this.
And I, I have talked to them and that's why I have not enforced anything. He said, I, I get it. It's, it's.
No, I get it too.
Yeah.
But yeah, I can understand a lady getting upset. She rented, she rented the pavilion in that park space, uh, you know, and, and she thought she was entitled to the property period, which. Okay, she was definitely.
And that should be addressed because she was, I mean, it was, we don't have one vehicle there. There was probably ten vehicles there. She was throwing everybody off the property. And, and I don't, and, and so that needs to be addressed, I would say, because a lot of people didn't know what, what do you mean? We can't be here.
Getting back to the main issue, I think if we do it for this company for the rest of the year, we need to do it to all companies.
Well, it has to be, yeah, it has to be standardized.
Right.
Uh, and it has to be in writing.
Yes.
Okay, so.
And if it's going to be reserved for your people who are there. Like other people reserve that area, then there should be a charge.
I don't think they're really reserved. I'm just dropping off. They're a business. They're just dropping off.
Well, if somebody, if one of their clients parks. Okay, maybe we can just, um, designate some parking spots for overflow for Burst Street access in the meantime.
I don't think you're going to be able to enforce that.
But it, it's everything, hill or skilder down there, you know, um.
Yeah.
I checked the access sites every day, every other day during summer. So there was eight cars in there today. Because all the access sites were chock full today. I mean, every day of the week. I mean, it's amazing. Only people are using. I understand that. So, uh, you know, and parking is a nightmare, not only there, an honor.
So, so getting back to the matter, I think it's officially the board can agree on. These companies dropping off canoe kayaks for the customers. Uh, so they can carry on what they're doing throughout the rest of the year.
Yes, yes.
And zoning is good.
Yes, that's basically what I was suggesting.
Yes. I agree with that.
Okay, so.
I would just keep in mind though, be respectful. Like you say, you got one vehicle. I mean, that's pretty respectful in my opinion.
No, it's six, six vehicles down the line.
I have a question. Are any of your customers parking at the access or are they going to the overflow? Because what we don't need is that parking lot filled up so locals who just want to swim at that access have no place.
We tell, we've always told the people to park on the street.
Yeah.
But you can't, you can't enforce that.
We can't, we don't, we don't, especially if they ever go down there.
They, they don't because I've talked to them, so.
Yeah, but you know, when the locals go there and there's no place.
So at the moment, what I, what I'm suggesting is maintain the status quo. Try and accommodate this and, and, uh, amend the parks ordinance to, uh.
I, I agree because whatever we do is going to. Go contrary to what we've been doing and what we say, what the signing says, you know.
I think we just need to clear up what's going down in the pavilion and how that, the rental agreement is, is spread.
And the other thing was is, is Angie takes the reservations for, uh, just about everything, all rentals. So if, if she does get something for like a Saturday or a Sunday. Uh, maybe he needs to be informed.
He shouldn't need to be informed. Why would we inform him?
Yeah, uh, I would just say that when they rent the pavilion out, they need to know that, that public property and.
If, if, if that's, we need to find out what.
We have to see if that's what it says on there.
Yeah, we got to see.
I have to see if I have it. I don't have it on my computer.
So that's where we really need to start. We need to see what the rental says. And then we need.
Right, so rental.
We need a better signage down there too, I don't know.
Okay.
I would probably encourage all of your customers to go ahead and leave their vehicle at your business and shuttle them. The, just for now.
Yeah, if at all, uh. Okay, uh.
That would, that would solve it for the next couple of weeks and then we'll work on getting something set up for next season.
Government works really well.
Yeah.
Well, you know, but, but a person in you that, I'm, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, obviously, we make the discontact. It's not.
And it's, we're not like trying to.
We know everybody and, I mean, twenty-five years, we never had an issue and now this came up and so.
I would say that's coming up now.
Okay, did you get a copy of this? So, so you know, this is the amendment that restricts.
And you sent me this, yes. Yeah, you did send me that.
All right, um, but anyway, I'm, I'm glad, uh, you pointed out the issue and the inadequacy of our standards. So we'll deal with that and. But the chips fall where they may for the next month and a half. Okay.
And everybody knows who I am now. And like I said, you don't really know us and.
Well, thanks for your time. Thanks.
Okay, and how do we know when, should we be involved in this or should, I mean?
Uh, basically what, what will happen is, uh. Once we. Go through the, the motions here. I mean, if there's a, a, on the planning commission schedule, if they're going to deal with this issue, you may want to hold it a minute.
Okay, and how do we find that out?
Uh, that's on the, uh, on the calendar.
It's usually the first Monday of the month, seven o'clock right here.
Okay. Yeah, same thing.
But I'll, I'll tell you right now that the planning commission is totally focused on the master plan.
Okay.
So any, anything other than the master plan is getting put on the back burner. Just for the fact that we want to get the master plan done before the next board takes off.
But any other thing is too, uh, this is going to take some time. So it'll go into the fall months and winter months. And for, uh, anything gets decided, it comes back to the board.
Well, you're more than welcome to come to the planning commission meeting. You'll be able to meet some of the, uh, the commission themselves. Uh, we've got a good group on planning commissions going to be very well.
And that's the first Monday of the month?
Yes.
Here?
Yeah, seven AM, seven, seven PM.
Send an email, say, hey, I'll sit down there, but then any changes.
Get up at the roosters. All right. I just thought of that. Okay.
You sent the deputy report.
Okay.
You sent the deputy report.
Uh, well, my guess, special order of the business where I add them, deputy report, Mr. Um, Mr. Grayson.
Good evening. In the month of July, the Calcasas Sheriff's Office investigated eighty-three incidents, twenty-four child arrests. Uh, during Torch Fest, which is the week that, you know, surrounding Fourth of July. The Calcasas Sheriff's Office had handled sixteen incidents in relation to Torch Fest. In the month of July, we had three most complaints filed in our agency. We had three operating intoxicated arrests. One drug related complaint. In the month of July, the other sheriff's deputies and I had wrote fourteen parking citations. And then the Calcasas Sheriff's Office had shown a large patrol presence along the shoreline at the south end of the Sandbar this year. We've seen a large decrease in criminal trespassing complaints. And with that, I had spoken with numerous property owners in the area of Torch Lake, and I should have quite a bit of appreciation for state leads, the sheriff's office, and county sheriff's office passing through. Then on or about July fourth, the Calcasas Sheriff's Deputy initiated a traffic stop in the Epic City, and the investigations, the web had led to the arrest of the male driver. Were operating intoxicated and possession of firearms or the influence. had led to the arrest of the male driver, who operating intoxicated and possession of firearms or influence. And then I had met my forty dollar return first night of July.
Any questions for?
Is there standing orders out there not to give speeding tickets?
No, there isn't.
No, I think we should be increasing them by.
Well, the thing about it is, is timing, you know, whether it's uh the regular sheriff's patrol or his, these two hours. Uh you know, uh that's just, I sat down there at Freedom Park, and there was one time. Anytime I got a bill, I'll just sit down here by the flagpole, watch the sign, and there are people going by that sign in excess of sixty miles an hour, yeah.
I hate to say it, the other day I was driving through off duty, there's a motorcycle going out in the drag, as soon as it hit that bridge, poppy wheel. And I called in the dispatch, hey, is there anyone in the area out here? Nope, no state troopers, the other couple deputies were dealing with something. It's like, what a day to be off, but.
Maybe you should park under our digital.
Unmarked cars?
But we used to, but that is one of my spots, I tried parking there a lot during July, they break from that sign.
I see you there.
Probably better here.
Yeah, okay, well, things been actually relatively quiet.
Yeah, it it signs are working, but I'm just, there's still some odd people that, like.
I think overall, we've seen a pretty good decrease in speed domain right here, but there's still a small group of people that don't really care at all.
Anybody else? You go back to work, sir. Uh minutes of July eighteenth. Okay, I didn't notice anything, I would object to, or was out of the ordinary.
At the very end, it said the window's leaking, the wall is rotting, and that's been done, right?
Yeah, I talked to them as they were doing the siding, and they tagged uh the trim onto the bill, which I just gave to you. And that'll have to be approved. Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes from July eighteen.
Second. I want to face the AI.
Alright.
Alright. Respondents, I've been busy. Four voicemails to the lawyer, one email, he was on definitely vacation last week. Didn't return until Tuesday, I called him Tuesday, I called him Wednesday, called him this morning. Uh I haven't had a response to questions for uh basically the uh check for rising for uh their collection agency, uh whether that was mailed or not. I know it got to the lawyer's office, Christine said she mailed it, you know, with the letter, so that should have been done. Um the other thing was the STR review, I gave it to him last week, like I said, he was on vacation. So I haven't heard back from him, and I told him as soon as possible.
Yeah, but that's not the way it was supposed to go. We're supposed to get back together, go over the short term level, right? So you just bypass the board.
Well, these these uh basically, there are only, there's one question that was uh that was amended, and the rest was, the rest of the boiler.
The copy that you had Angie post to the website was not amended at all, it wasn't edited. The last half of it was not finished, I compared it with my copy.
This is the reason why you're supposed to get together at the board.
To make sure it's all about us.
And when when we get it back from the lawyer, it's been fixed, the entire thing, I'm sure they'll ask.
So then we're gonna send it back to the lawyer?
No, no, then we schedule a.
Because he's thinking he's looking at like a final draft, right? But that's not the final draft.
Well, if there's any changes to be made on a legal standpoint, we'll get it back with his recommendations, we can amend it as required.
He doesn't even know what the final draft says, is my point, you bypassed the board when you sent it.
I'd sent you the copy of.
The the board was supposed to have another due.
Yeah, you did send it to us at the same time that you sent it to the attorney.
Okay, so what was, so what was different other than one of second?
I didn't get a chance to look through it.
Okay, okay, all right, so if you wanna set up another, I would wait until the lawyer got back to us. Set up one meeting, okay, go through everything, fix it, vote. Set a public hearing date, okay, at which time we have a public hearing, then vote to approve it. All right, I was trying to save us a meeting. All right.
It only takes a quarter, that's all I'm saying, keep bypassing the board, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, all right, so anyway, that was done, the other thing was uh.
The noise violation?
Uh yeah, the noise violation, I did get a call from a certain Ford clerk. And uh basically hooked her off, that was another thing included in all the voicemails was uh for her to uh for the lawyer to contact, the uh circuit clerk clerk. Uh basically, set hearing date for uh the second offense, noise violation for this space.
First time the um noise, the noise ordinance is being enforced?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Well, actually, it was enforced, it's one third time it's been challenged.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
So, uh and then.
Also had the fence at Division Road that Justin Cohen had added to vote.
Yeah. That should be under parks and rent too, or maintenance, what to do about the fencing.
Okay. We discussed, and the parks are talking about.
Let's wait until we get there.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Which one we put in under maintenance or parks or?
That should be maintenance, that's.
I agree.
Basically, there's all the fencing on the accesses.
You sent a quote for the um Freedom West from Morrison. Where is that for? Additional breaker lines?
Oh, from Morrison? Okay, yeah, I asked him to do that, so I could bring this this up. Who sent it to Freedom West?
This should probably go through parks, because we are waiting for grants for that area, we don't, where they're gonna start.
No, I know that, but there is a line already out there.
Yes.
All I'm asking him to do is basically repair the street light, okay, and repair the electrical.
How much was that in?
That makes me down.
Yes.
A thousand dollars?
I mean, there's a fifty amp circuit breaker in the panel just waiting to be turned on, so we could light that thing at night.
And that light, the the wire that that light's been out for.
Yeah, a lot of bulb is needed, I mean, the power's just gone.
Well, I'd like to wait until, unless you absolutely need it, I'd like to wait until we we know where anything grants next month.
Yeah.
Start making plans on where we're gonna put stuff, if it's gonna be moved, it might be moved to be attached to the pavilion.
Yeah, but you know, you're talking way down the road, this, that grant ain't gonna happen, like, you know, we need to, we need to get the light. It's been way too long.
Basically, and the box just needs to be replaced.
Right.
Okay, with with some electrical there, um. Do you think they're leaving somewhere?
Would that fall under uh first expense?
No, no, that would be, that would be ours, utilities, our repaid bills, so.
All right.
The the only thing I would suggest is sort of regard, you know, like so kids can't throw rocks at and break it out again, so.
And the other thing is uh, I asked them to check the pole itself. Uh Craig says it may need replacement too, so that was, I don't know if that was included in there. They said they can do it. Yeah, but that would be uh, that's something that uh we can discuss, I would, the pole itself, but uh Craig says it's pretty rough.
It does say at the top of it.
Do we need a new pole?
I'm sorry?
The pole down at Freedom Park, it's broken light?
The light pole at the uh, at the north end.
No, do we, do we, do we need a new pole?
Freedom West, North End, big light.
The one at the back side, um located, but it's getting to that point. I mean, it's, it's, it's getting old, it's getting rotten, we're getting in the same position we had.
I asked them if you'd, they were capable of replacing it, and he said yes, but I told them not included. Simply because getting power to that is just a matter of.
Well, you know, they're not gonna jump right on it either, so maybe you can get get back with them and have them ask them at the pole?
Yeah.
And then.
I could give them.
We can approve this, but you might want to know.
Oh, no, I would, I I, that wasn't, that was an issue that that had to be dealt with tonight, I just wanted to make it a boardware. Security pole north end of property, no, it doesn't say replace, but this is what they would do to them.
Well, you know, uh we're gonna approve this, and then have Morrison let us know that pole needs to be, right? We could.
He says we need it.
More expertise in that situation than you, um, because the pole can look bad and stand for twenty more years, or it can look badly decent, and we can have it snapped off.
Yeah, that's true too. But uh anyway, uh I'll ask them for their opinion on the pole in the meantime. So they can go out there and fix the light in the receptacle. But I'll have them check the pole before they do it, get a call back, and I don't know what it would cost, probably five hundred bucks.
Well, I'd say we go ahead and accept this quote number one, five, one, nine from Morrison's for a thousand dollars, okay? I think he's told me around fifteen hundred to replace it, with, I mean, included with this.
I'll I'll second that.
But if they're gonna move, if they're gonna put a pole in, we can discuss where it's gonna go, right?
No, the 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 line is out there, if you want a mirror on an electrical wire, you're talking about two feet underground, I'm not a digger. Okay, all I'm trying to do is restore the light in the receptacle, but it should be on a pole that's gonna let the people that rent them.
Like you said, look first, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, roll call.
All right, Albert Keys. Christine Johnson, yes, join shouts?
Yes.
The addressing?
Yes. Yes. Okay, getting back to correspondence, on the bank loan crap. Uh I wanted to deal with this uh kind of as a separate issue, I have some reservations about option two. Uh we did, I do have the minutes from uh the June twentieth meeting, where option two was approved. Uh I did call uh Mr. Nelson. Any loan we get is gonna be a fifteen year term loan anyway. Okay, uh the bank doesn't make four year loans. Uh the other thing was, uh you're dedicating uh four years of the entire road budget to this project. Which means you couldn't even put down Brian in summertime, or re.
Well, that's one one way of presenting it to us.
Cause you're borrowing one point two million dollars.
No, I understand that, but if you're paying it off with the entire road fund budget for four years, which is the way that was written, okay? Um what I'm suggesting is, okay, you're gonna have to do a fifteen year long act. Uh Act eighty-nine is long anyway, all right? So why not give yourself the leeway to use half the road fund money over a period of seven or eight years? And still save a hundred and seventy-five thousand to do an additional road, why, to make this? Because what you're obligating for the next four years for the next board is you fix boils and Zimmerman, and then you do nothing for three years.
That's not true.
Not true.
That's not true, the board, the road committee sat and figured everything out, and I would like Jim to, it's magnificent again. They all looked at it, you're not spending all of that money, they've already set aside all the roads they're gonna do. What's the total amount, Jim, you're asking for?
It was seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for bulk home, which is our portion.
And that's just, that's just the cap oils.
Let me finish, that was for a two inch overlay on oils, with some additional gravel on the side, of course, you have to build the shoulders up if you want. And there was an additional fifty thousand dollars in there for upgrades to drainage and rocks in the ditch to keep them from.
But it doesn't restore the the entire drainage system.
Well, when you say restore the entire drainage system, are you, you're saying removing the entire drainage system that's there?
No, I'm saying clearing all the ditches, okay, removing and replacing, removing or replacing every color that's blocked. Or it's set too high, all right, and restoring the drainage esements from the road to the lake. Which is an issue right now.
Yes, that move, that was all.
Okay, to me, this. Let me, let me get the original.
I wish that you had been at the road, you would have understood everything, these guys really did a lot of work on it. And we've got an engineer here from Plant Drive, who talked to Huron, and got discussed what to be done.
Yeah, I just don't wanna waste basically three hundred thousand dollars without fixing the drainage system.
Well, it's not three hundred thousand dollars, I'm not raising that number.
All right, bottom.
Basically, you know, the the overlay is is a good job, and a better job than the complete tear up. Complete tear up has a danger of risk involved, if you get down and start tearing the logs out, which is a base, and going today. Which is a good base today, those logs are still in good shape today, and they've been there over six years, okay? And I talked to the the product engineer at Huron, and she agrees, and she doesn't wanna tear those logs up.
No, I know that, I know that.
The risks, so this is a, it costs a quarter of what the complete tear up is. We can get the money a lot quicker, and we can do it a lot quicker. We we wait, we've been waiting ten years already, okay, because we were looking at a fight, you know.
I understand, I just want it done right, okay?
Okay.
Fixing the drainage, restoring the drainage system will exonerate the sponginess of that road.
No, it's, you know, again, it's gonna be there either way, and by the way, they have restored a good portion of the drainage system. Already, it's been dug out, and the rest of it is sitting there dry.
So you're you you're completely happy with just a two inch cap on there?
Yes. Completely.
It doesn't include some other drainage improvements too, it's not just the cap.
Yeah, cause there are culverts out there through driveways that are filled solid concrete.
There's one, there's one, that unfortunately, we can't discuss that anymore, because according to John Rogers, that driveway, that culvert. Um was never property of the county, so it was put in by private person, not by the county. So we can't complain about it having cement, I can't complain about it having cement bagged it anymore.
It's the.
That's that's done?
It's part of the road east, man, is it not correct?
I, well, that's what I was told.
It's part of the road east. Probably, so.
It's not part of the road. It's not part of the road.
And there's also, there's also people backfilling the the access drainage to the lake itself, okay?
The other thing is, the drainage is, it's actually pretty much completely independent of the road. The road's been there with that crummy drainage for years, okay? And the road is set up, so it's on a wood base, all these logs.
I understand that.
That flow, all right, and and the the advantage of fixing the drainage isn't for the road, it's for our our cross spaces and our basements and that kind of stuff. Because what happens is the the now, instead of flowing to a drain and going down to the lake. It it goes under the road, and it goes under the lots, it comes. It, it goes under the road and it goes under the lots, it comes halfway up by driveway and then between our two driveways. It bubbles up, okay, whenever it rains. And then, then it gets into the crawl spaces and everything else. So it's going underground all the way to the lake.
So I'm asking you directly, you are totally, okay, in agreement with option two here?
Yes.
Okay, so if he does, I will call, I will call a lawyer back and tell him option two is what we wanna write up. And this resolution was passed on the eighth. Okay, so he can go ahead with those figures. Okay, and, and basically fill out the loan application so we can present it and get it done. The other thing I need to do. John Rogers wants basically a commitment from this township board. That we're gonna do this, so he can basically advertise for bid proposals. So he can schedule it with hard prices. Beginning January first, so it will happen in April or when the fraud laws come off.
We voted on it.
All right, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure, cause I don't want something happening three years down the road with you guys coming back.
Okay, we can, we can do three or four overlays for the price of one total.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, but, but.
Let, let me expand on it. Ben, I understand your concerns about the drainage. I want you also to understand that in the last probably fifty years, the drainage has been good for probably four years. Because we just had it cleaned up this year, it would be plugged next year. Because of the weeds, the sod, people putting sun. So that road just is so crappy, that base is so crappy. Has managed to keep a piece of shit road on top of it for sixty plus years with no drainage almost all the time. So I don't think a two inch cap over it is gonna go to hell real quick. If that piece of crap can stay there with no real drainage for most of its life. So that's why we have faith.
Areas where they made driveways and stuff, it's been there for ten years and it looks like.
Okay, all right, that's, that, now, the other suggestion he had was he wants to level that road. Okay, he wants to lay a half inch kind of primer coat down of asphalt with the road level. So that the water runoff disperses evenly and helps the drainage system and then do the two inch cap. So that might be something for the.
And I thought the first over, the first, the first level was gonna do that.
The what?
The overlay is two layers.
Yeah, yeah.
And I thought the first layer was gonna.
Well, yeah, what, what he wants to do is level the road entirely.
How are you gonna do that?
He's basically gonna.
You can tear the, tear the thing all up and it's gonna be worse.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't understand what you're.
Well, I think I understand, he's talking about removing the cap that's there. I mean, I don't know how you can go over the old, the old cap.
Basically, what he'd do is he'd grind up the old road, lay a half inch over it and then put the two inch crap up, cap on. And, and level that road, level that road, so, so basically the, the water flow, the runoff is equally distributed along the drainage system. Instead of.
No problem.
Oh, I, I, I understand what you mean now.
Yeah, so. I have a question, has there been any consideration of fixing oils the same way bags?
Yeah.
When they fixed bags, I thought those guys didn't know what they were doing. But what, but what they did has worked wonderful for the town.
Okay, and that's another issue too, when we get to roads. Okay, cause I got a call from Ron Pop this week too, about back road. So, anyway, uh, we'll, we'll table this. And I, I will, I will call him and tell him or go for option two.
Right.
And let John Rogers handle it the way he wants to. But he did wanna level that road and put, and put an extra half inch down, it's like a primer coat, so the two inch cap was on level ground.
It doesn't sound fine.
Okay.
Just so he don't get done.
All right. Moving on. All right.
Can, can I ask the attorney, is that the same attorney that the plot came from, Jim? That was done.
What, Nettles? Yeah, Nettles, I, I, I've been dealing with him.
Okay.
Okay, so he should have, uh, uh, basically Act ninety-nine paperwork prep for us. At the next meeting, which I believe is September ninth.
And, and.
Okay.
He's got a question.
Just one quick question, so the fifteen year part that you were talking about there. Um. As long as there's no, like, early payment penalty or anything.
I checked with the bank.
And, and it won't tie up our credit for the rest of the township, I know we have a, a limit. Like one point four million or something like that.
Actually, it's two point two. I have his email here, printed that out. Sure, find it. But what I wanted to do, the whole point of this was to get it motioned. That's approved by the board, that township is committing to repair of Boils and Zimmerman Road. So I can send that to John Rogers, so he can open bids.
We already did that last meeting, that's the whole thing here, we're going back.
No, I have, I have, I have, the motion was to adopt the resolution. Okay.
The absolute.
Okay, so I can send them the minutes. All right, but I, I want a motion for tonight's meeting. That says we have committed to these two projects so that he can open the bids.
You make your motion?
Yes.
Second of the motion.
Okay.
Can you, um, sort of, um, I'm, I'm gonna.
Uh, Joe.
The wording for that.
Uh, basically, uh, uh. And this is for, I would just make the motion, go ahead and see bid for the reconstruction of two. That's what he's asking for. Yeah.
According to options.
Cause we've already committed X amount of dollars. Right, right.
Yeah, that's what Tom said.
Yes, uh, basically, proceed with the financing of the falls, oils, road and Zimmerman mode improvement projects. Right from his letter. Basically, that's. That's all I need.
Okay. All right, roll call vote, Tom Beckers?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes, Joanne Childs, yes, and Albert Keys.
Yes.
It's official.
Thank you.
And, uh, the payment plan is basically up to the next board. So, uh, the only other concern I had on this was when to actually get the loan. The interest rates are basically set by the bank for a period of sixty days. When they send you a quote, that's what you get, this one's already thirty with though. But. You don't wanna take that loan out in November and pay interest on it until April. Not that amount of money. So the execution of the loan will fall in the next board. All we've done is approved that we're gonna do this. Okay, um, moving on.
Did you hear someone that interviewed you yesterday?
Legal. Basically, the check to Verizon, uh, is there selection?
Guys.
And you, and like I said, uh, a review of the draft, so we'll get that back. Basically, you'll generate whatever change, but necessary. And then schedule. Okay, I'll report speed and writing, let's jump treasurer. Well, I need to get the signatures. Guess I'm gonna have to sign it, Carol, but that is required for the bank loan.
Is that something they've devoted on?
No, no, this is a board review, I just asked Dawn for the tax, uh, taxable value of the incurred meter. So that the bank would have that information to calculate our match home. Loan value, which is two point two million. So this will not affect any other projects. Yes, you'll use matching funds for the park and the park grants, yes, you can go back through this process. Okay, and borrow the money for the matching funds, if that's necessary. Okay, actually, you could do the one point two million on your own, but.
Yeah.
But that's not our decision.
Um, on the treasurer's report, I just wanna say that, uh, Lee and I got together for the first time in months. And went through her accounts and my accounts to get everything squared up. Um, she had some stuff put in wrong funds and so we weren't balanced. And so your last report and this report are not gonna go together. That she has fixed everything and we are now balanced together.
And in, in the process, we're, we're transferring money into excess money. Reports are on the table, but some of the fire funds we're investing in Michigan class are not being used. Gold money. Because you get greater interest. And, um, I asked her to move some of her parts, there's no reason set, keeping the set and just, that won't improve without growing the good interest. So, she's been doing that.
So you had a couple of accounting issues, you had, uh, correct basically.
Yeah, so her, the, the total amount was correct, but the money was in the wrong funds. So our balance is.
Your, your separation of funds was not matching.
Right.
Okay.
And mine was right and yours was wrong, so you had my, you had my balances for the last.
Sure you wrote that in.
That's odd for you.
Okay, fire department, that river's kind of fat.
Hey, we're not, where do you have the. Oh, yeah, you just.
Mr. Dratter, I, I made a phone call, uh, a couple of weeks ago.
Hold on, we're not there yet.
Oh, you said, right.
Yeah.
I just responded. He's a first responder.
Well done.
Thank you. Okay, so Greg, floor is littered, so.
No, we're still on clerk.
We're still on a clerk?
Yeah, you only.
You have an issue?
You only did treasurer.
Oh, okay. I thought you, I thought you did your report.
Oh, no, no, I was just, I was just, uh, clarifying on the treasurer's report. Any question on the expenses by vendor detail, I will tell you, I have a stack of bills that are, uh, not yet paid. Um, because I haven't been in the office to do that this week, they're all current. But I haven't, I, I tried to get them done before the meeting, so that everything is on there, but I didn't get a chance to do that this week. Um, also, I will point out that, uh, during the audit, Tyler. Uh, helped me to rearrange things in my QuickBooks to get all of the taxes. Off of my QuickBook reports, so that will no longer affect our numbers here. Um, he put that in a totally different separate area so that we can track it, but it won't affect the report that I do. And that's how I was able to get our, um, profit and loss, uh, budget comparison. For us, for April through June, for the first quarter, so I also provided that for everybody.
Okay, that information gonna be helpful with forty twenty-nine?
Well, it should be, that's all, well, no. It's only the first quarter of this year.
Yeah.
For the forty twenty-nine, when she wanted.
Forty-nine, you didn't want this.
Is that what they want?
Who's that? Forty twenty-nine is the military request tax part and basically it is the, uh, expenses and, uh, general revenues. Accounting on the back end of it.
Right.
Which would be, uh.
That's the.
That's on an annual basis, I believe.
The, the one I do in the spring gives them all, all of our, uh, actual information.
You may wanna call clerk for clarification, because I know we, what we've been doing is sending in the village. Uh, form, and then later on, they ask for, you know, the, uh, basically general financial condition of your township. Which is expenditures and the revenues.
They, they've never sent me any requests like that, so.
Okay, you might wanna check with Scotty Burton. Because that form is like eight pages long.
Is that the one I do in the spring?
No.
With the.
The L forty twenty-nine, if you download it with the instructions, it's eight pages long. The first, first sheet is the village that you have enforced.
I, I've, I've never seen that reporter.
Okay.
And I've never done it, so.
I don't, I think I brought it, so, uh, after the meeting, though.
Okay, I, I did email Dawn and she was gonna walk me through it.
Right.
But I had asked her if she would help us do that, because I remember the last time she said, don't just expect I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, but, uh.
So that's it for that, I do have, um. To be approved.
Right.
This dual maintenance, of course, and invoice that Tom just gave me, and that was for putting the siding on the garage.
And doing the language.
Okay, so. The garage siding job, was that approved at a prior meeting?
Yes, that came out of capital improvement funds.
I can't remember now.
That was a while ago, we approved that and, and approved the money for replacing this dead composite material.
Okay, okay. So that, those things should come from that road or what?
Yes, it's a permanent physical plan. It's like buying a new truck.
Okay, so, uh, motion to approve the invoice for do all maintenance. In the amount of thirty-seven hundred dollars. For the garage siding and repair of the windows on the township hall. To be paid from capital improvement.
Are you making that motion?
I am making that motion.
I'll second it then. How much was that?
Three thousand seven hundred dollars.
That was basically my one.
Yep, yep. Materials for further window trim, evidently.
That is your mobile.
Right, well, he had a whole crew out there and they were working for days.
Really?
Well, they got, they worked through the weekend, they started with, uh, he shut up Thursday. They were there Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
But we, I think Tom, for bids, we give anybody else, right? Ryan, Ryan Williams made an offer.
Yeah, but Ryan Williams is on the planning commission and withdrew his offer.
Okay, okay, I didn't know, but.
Okay, those were the only bids we got.
All right, roll call vote, Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Joanne Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Tom Beckers?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. And then. I also have. Question on the invoice for mortgages. That's how you pronounce.
Oh, the porta potties.
Yeah, for the, um, the extra porta potties for heritage, uh, Freedom Park. And the lake accesses and then also the Fourth of July extra porta potties. And the total amount is one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And. Um. I, I don't know how, like, I know it's something that you guys always do and it just always gets done. Who ordered these, was it approved by the board? What does it, how does it get paid? Um, I've written the check from the general account, but I don't know if, if it's a general account invoice or is it a parks invoice?
Uh, no.
And I know they're not looking to spend eighteen hundred and fifty dollars.
The parks invoice would be at the parks.
These are all parks?
No, I understand that. But, well.
The Fourth of July one is on us.
Yeah, the Fourth of July is on us.
Okay.
And I remember we said we would cover the cost of that because, uh, tortugely.
When we approved, back out, we approved up to nine thousand dollars bill for, from the sheriff's department was seven and changed, I believe.
Almost eight thousand.
Yeah, almost, it was almost eight grand.
And at that time, we approved the Fourth of July.
And at that time, we approved the Fourth of July.
Yeah, basically, uh.
All right, but you still have eight hundred and seventy dollars for the parks. Um, extra toilet rentals, and I don't believe that was part of their budget, I don't think they know that we're gonna bill for that. I've been billing them for a heritage park, but I haven't. Yeah, it's, it's all of them, it's, it's.
That was.
Heritage, Freedom Park, East and West, and the Lake Street, Birch Street.
The heritage will pay for the, the ones that we use. That's in the plan.
Heritage.
For the carnival, when we had the carnival, we put extra out there and paid for them, so you wanna.
Well, I don't even have a bill for that.
Oh, okay.
No, that was last year.
Oh, okay.
They're over there this year.
This year here, but um.
Okay.
They said, I believe they said it off.
Yeah, that that's not on here.
So, so where the, the extra, the eight hundred bucks.
Eight hundred and seventy dollars.
These were at, the public access specifically for the Fourth of July weekend?
They got, they got placed there.
There's one at, there's, we got some, there's one at Cedar, there's one at Birch. There's.
One at Lake.
Two at Lake.
Well, this should have been, it should have, it should have been part of Parks and Rec.
And two at Freedom Park and one at Heritage.
Right, but the Fourth of July stuff comes out of the general thing.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refund the general fund from parks for the. And then I'll just let them know that they are paying that bill.
The, the question about who orders them, who put in order?
I don't know.
I don't know, I think it's.
But they just don't do it, but they didn't know what to.
I think the sheriff's department didn't, they just seriously, handful.
For the Fourth of July.
For the Fourth of July. Put out for that, but for, for the one. For the ones for the summer months, I think that's basically contracted cost burns. They pick them up in the fall, they put them out in the spring. So I would, I would have to check to see if we have a cost burn thing and that generally came out of. The general fund until Parks and Rec, uh, a million. Now, technically, that's Parks and Rec bill. Until this board come on board, there was no porta johns at the access sites.
The what?
Till this board became active, there was no porta johns at the access sites. So somewhere in times, we had to offer this.
I think, I remember going back, just thinking, someone complained, you tell me there was no porta johns down at Lake Street, it was getting late in the spring. And I, I think I called them.
I called them.
You called them.
Somebody sent a DMI, it's long.
I'll check the file and see if we have a contract. Since it's split between.
Fourth of July is on us.
Then neither one is over a thousand, so it doesn't need. Wait. Parks does, Parks does need board approval because it's eight hundred and seventy and we only gave them approval for up to five hundred.
Right.
So.
We just proved the porta potties for the lake access site.
You're making that motion to approve the bill for eight hundred and seventy dollars to be paid by parks?
Right.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
If you put customers down there, nobody'd know what you're talking about. Unless they use them every day.
We've got parks back here.
Roll call vote, Tom Beckers?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
And the last thing for me is. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that um MTA is holding a conference in October. Um, I think it's October second in Gaylord. And they are having a uh session on that smooth moves, not uh what you think. Mastering the transition from one board to the next, so I'm going to go to that. So that I can be prepared for the transition and learn, you know, what kind of things we have to do, and that's gonna be a hundred and twenty five dollars.
I'm gonna go through that too.
Yes, and we do want to go to that too, so she's gonna help with the transition.
Christine, I have a question on your checks.
Yes.
We wrote checks for a hundred and thirteen thousand for the road commission, what does that cover?
That was, that was for Underhill.
Yeah, that was prepaid in of Underhill.
And they're working that. I mean, that's, yes.
I thought that's what it was, I just needed to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we're up to date on the, on Underhill. Alright, so we're done with questions?
Yes.
Sheriff's reports already been given, fire department now.
Respond.
Well, let him get out of here first. Alright, um, for the month of July, we had twenty requests first. Um, February, it was July. Um, it's just a problem, so it was kinda a busy year month, kinda with everybody in town. We had three train sessions with station twenty two hundred. Um, got a couple requests here, um, request number one is for one thousand five hundred fifty six dollars. This is for a cellular communicator. Um, for our alarm panel, which covers our smoke detectors, fire detectors in the station. We do have EMS personnel there as of there, went forward today for sixty five days a year.
I believe that would fall under emergency and would not need port approval.
Right, I know, yeah, I just, I had thought I'd send an email last week when I got it and find out about it. Um, but it's, so with the Ring Central phones, they took away our fax line.
Yeah.
So now we have to get a cellular communicator that communicates with the alarm panel, which lets Summit.
So you're replacing the fax line with this?
Basically, it's gotta be a cellular line, which is gonna raise a rate. About two hundred dollars per year from what we were paying off the regular, but. It it it's kinda the way everything's going with landlines, it's bothering, the cellular communicators are becoming more prevalent, I have in my house for. Um, yeah.
Tom, that's been done already?
No, I haven't sent it, I was waiting for approval.
Yeah, you have to.
Yes. Okay, um, the second request, I guess, to kind of eliminate this situation, uh, moving forward. Our emergency is request discretionary spending to be raised from one thousand dollars to four thousand dollars. Um, it's pretty, it's across the board through this area with fire chiefs having that discretionary spending, it's about that much. Um, I gotta base it off of, like, if we had to buy fire gear for a firefighter, then. Say something happened in the gear and we had to buy gear, I wouldn't have to wait till next month to get the gear. Um, so it's kind of a, it's about what every other fire department around here, between three and four thousand. Is what they, that they have discretionary spending, is what they can do. So, I mean, obviously, the bill will come in and you'll see how it.
So what you're, you're, you're asking for is anything over, under four thousand dollars. Uh, is that the fire, that the fire department's discretion?
Right.
Okay, so I move.
Or the fire chief's discretion.
I move you raise the uh limit for uh. Requesting board commission from one thousand dollars to four thousand dollars. For the fire department.
How, how often does this happen?
Well, just with things the way they are now, inflation, I mean, everything is just, it's just like everything's over a thousand dollars, like you buy gloves.
What's it cost, what's it cost to suit up a new recruit? Ten thousand?
Basically, it's firefighting silver suit and it's.
Right, yeah, struggle firefighting gear, armor gloves, not including the FCA.
Okay, so he's got basic gear, you know, but include your moms.
It doesn't happen very much, it kinda goes over the thousand dollar budget and it's, it's, you know, but it's just, just different stuff.
Last year we had hose tested for twenty eight hundred dollars, this year it was thirty three hundred.
The only problem that I see, you know, you can't, you can't go, get out of control and say, hey, you know, now we got this limit. You know, one week we're gonna do this, next week we're gonna do this, you know.
Well, they still have to go by their budget.
Yeah, I mean, we still have our budget, and obviously, it's not gonna be, you know.
They have to stay within their operational fractional funding limitations.
I mean, I think Christine can tell we won't spend, I mean, not, not, like, I'm not going crazy.
Did we get a second?
Yes, I can admit that. So roll call vote, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. I vote yes. Uh, LPs?
Yes.
Greg Adams?
Yes.
Tom Beckers?
Yes.
Greg Griffin?
Yes.
Alright, well, the next agenda item is the Rapid River uh fire contract. I mean, Greg has a little bit of information on it, so.
Researching their contract, uh, we haven't had a contract for over a year. They haven't paid for over a year. So right now, they're seventeen thousand one hundred dollars behind, and this is, since we started this. I was going to remember when it. We went and got the tax roll for every piece of property that we cover. Okay, and we've never updated it until this year. And that, so if we go with one and a half mil, what our contract calls for. Their new rate is gonna be twenty five thousand five.
Do we make the contract out for them, or do they make the contract out of that?
They basically send us the contract for services and we approve it once we fill in the blank for what it's gonna cost them. Okay, now, for some reason, that didn't come up last year, probably because we didn't get a contract request from them. Unless that contract was approved for two years. Uh, we've got the old contract here, it's for one year, isn't it? One year, that's usually on an annual basis, I know that. Yeah, and.
Are we the only one that gets, have we been doing service there in the, in the last?
They, they, yeah, they divide their tonsip up into three fire departments.
Okay, so they signed a contract with three of the fire departments.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so first of all, we need to send them a bill for seventeen thousand.
Did they do contracts with the other ones? Are we the only one they did new contract with?
I know they do a contract, okay, but they do, it's per run, per run. Every time they go in, do the one, like, Calcasas station sign the bills.
Okay, so here's the situation, first of all, the hell was for last year.
Right.
Secondly, their, Rick's gonna go up for next year. So, do you wanna uh contact them and? Should we send them a bill first, or do you wanna talk to whoever? I can call Terry, Terry Williams is their supervisor. Okay, and just explain the situation here. Because uh, first of all, they're, we're gonna have to settle up for last year, gonna figure out a way to do that, okay? And then, we're gonna, gonna have to send us another contract for us to approve for this year. So, that'll come up at next.
Issue, because like, our board, we cannot pay a bill without having a prior.
I, I know that, so we need basically, uh, we're gonna have to send them a bill for. Seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Can you tell me that contract, you sent me, produce that?
I'm sorry.
You sent me a copy of the contract, right? Did you tell that that was produced at our office or there?
I don't know, you know, actually, uh, it was a result of the audit that I even thought about it, because I had to pull all of our current contracts. And I knew that we had that contract and I was like, oh, I better look and see if that's in there. And then I realized there was no new contract.
I think they send the contract us, if I remember right.
Yeah, usually, it's basically a request for services to contract for the current year. And last year, we didn't get one.
But other townships do.
Well, they, I think it's per run, I'm not sure. I'm not sure about the northeast part of the county or what they do, I don't bet, but Calcasas state, they, they bill per run. So it's not really a.
We're the ones with the contract.
Yeah, we just do a blank contract, I mean, we can do fifty runs or we can do ten runs. So. And it's based off of the area that we do cover with the contract, we don't cover the whole contract.
So basically, if you send, you do have a copy of the old. I've got a copy of the contract, okay, so basically, what we have to do is change the dates, plug in the value. Right, send that to them for their board to approve, okay, so they can cut us a check for that last year. Then have them request uh services for this year.
Cause they paid quarter, if I remember right, they paid quarterly?
Well, they paid quarterly, but by the contractors, folks paid by the.
Pardon?
By the year. Supposed to be lump sum.
I remember we used to get it quarterly.
No, it actually does say there quarterly to July first of twenty twenty three on this one.
So I guess, do we show any payments from Rapid River?
So what we have to do is send them an updated contract for last year with the, with the, that. Figure on it, okay, request payment for last year and request a contract for this year, with this year's cost on it. So that's.
They look at us and they say, well, why don't we do run with, do something different if they have, do us a contract, what if they say, per run like Calcasas?
They could entertain it, yeah, I mean, we could give them a price and say, yeah, we'll do it per run, we'll still be approved.
Do you know how many runs we have there last year, we're gonna be talking to them?
I can tell you exactly. They have been shot better.
Yeah, they have. They've approached a different part of purpose, just to be like, hey, just take, just take everything, just take you.
It's past, they might, seventeen thousand, but at least we can maybe talk to them about per run that we did there.
Yeah, now, I think we.
Okay, so this self there hasn't been concluded yet, yet?
Oh, yeah, that, no, no, I need that paid for back and then I can build up, I can get it filled out.
We, we just approved, you, you authorized this to yourself.
Fly this need it back and I'll get it done on.
Joanne, twenty runs for Rapid River last year.
I'm sorry?
Twenty runs. You need to sign this, Derek?
I don't think so.
No, it just says something prior by.
Is there some way we can figure out how much Calcasas pays per run, so we can kind of figure out?
Think it's what, seventeen hundred?
It's nine hundred eighty one dollars, a lot of cents.
So we should, we would be fair in asking, how many runs, we have so many runs by that alone, at least ask, ask them that.
It's roughly twenty thousand. It's roughly twenty. I mean, you're wrong.
Because it's after the fact, no, we just have, I think we need to detail it more, because it's after the fact, they didn't pay for contract, we were taking care of it.
So you're gonna send them a contract after the fact, okay, and request a new contract for this year?
I guess comes a question if they don't accept it. You know, how do we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You send them a letter?
Kind of sticky situation, but it kind of probably need to come with the board to be like, hey, we're not gonna respond there anymore, we're not.
We know what we gotta do, it's up to them to react, they have to find out.
But I just don't think it's fair if we go up there for free the charter. Training gear, guys.
Yeah, they're, I'm sure they're admirable.
If we can tell, we can tell them how many runs, and this will come back, so this is what, everything is fair. They didn't pay it, but come over seventy thousand, they're gonna wish they did the seventy thousand.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so we're finished with the fire department?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, fire commissioner, four eight fifteen and twenty four. Let's sort, fire commission has a public workshop on the township master plan. On eight seventeen forty fourth, and zero eight hundred to eleven hundred, uh, this Saturday at Little Red Schoolhouse. Fire commission is requesting signage pertaining to overnight parking and a copy of the ordinance. Uh, planning commission is requesting signage pertaining to overnight parking and a copy of the ordinance being placed at our parks and roads. To eliminate any confusion and or public awareness. And I don't know if that would be us or that would be Parks and Rec.
There, uh, there is signage there and all of our parks.
Sign that has to be changed.
I don't think there's anything uh at uh where the pavilion is saying there's no overnight parking, that's what they were doing.
Parks are already talking about making signs, so we just have to coordinate this one, I think. They're talking about making some sign.
There's, there's, please just request from the planning commission, I don't know who it falls.
Gotta figure out what's on and what needs to be fixed, I did.
But maybe the copy of the ordinance needs to be posted as well.
Yeah.
So everybody can read it and then everybody understands it.
Nine pages.
We need the same at the cemetery.
As far as parking goes, so.
That's all I have.
We could put an excerpt to the ordinance in a concerning part. Cause that's about half a page.
Well, it also also pertains to, we need to sign up with the rental agreement is before we do, I think, well, H A is.
Maybe you know.
Yeah, well.
When people rent.
Just another, he's gone through.
At the lake access?
Updated.
Across the home. Does the rental agreement say anything about?
No, I think it does.
Does it say anything about um the area that they're renting? Is it just the pavilion or is it the entire area or?
You say right, it's, 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 it's. Explain some use of it.
I have to read it, I can't start.
Okay.
I talked to the young lady who involved the money owner person. And it wasn't just the parking, but the people were coming up on the pavilion while they, I mean, they basically had to share. And when they checked, they were told, we have a right to be here.
This overflow.
And this overflow, but we wouldn't have overflow if they didn't have twenty or twenty five cars parked down there. Cause no matter what they said, their cars go to the wayside first. And then you add twenty cars from the delivery, then you add another ten cars for people. And then you've got people going across the street. Um, and across the street isn't, it isn't just a well thought out parking, it's really the drive in, and you just have to kind of pull over somewhere. But I had never saw more garbage in like three years, I've been picking up garbage. In that little street pavilion area than I did that, it was, it was everywhere. Undone.
The idea that predators that she won't run anymore, so.
I concur with that, it's, it's a bigger issue than what they said was. Cause I've sat down there and I've watched the people get in and out and they were coming directly from there, they park right down there. Like you said, they park the closest that they can first off.
Yeah.
And the trailer is coming down with six to ten kayaks on it, so it's, it's not just a little here and there. It's gradually increased. And again, if we don't do something like you.
Well, that's why I mentioned paddle that for you.
And that translates anywhere from twenty to thirty cars and for the most part, people are completely excited.
And we heard tonight one.
Okay, uh, recess at eight thirty, we convene in ten minutes and we'll get to John West.
Run down the beach.
Trying to leave that work.
You should. If anyone, I got like first, somebody who wants to hear this.
Number families.
Okay. Just wanna share. Just go use it, you don't have to.
Yeah, I was thinking.
I would.
I think a brother there, yeah, it'd be efficient.
Because. Those are the guys that are gonna be taking over.
Planning commission.
Um, yeah, I just didn't, I knew there was, I had a lay bone, commercial operation. I know we did a dividend, so there's kind of.
Do they got a section?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't filled out for the commissioner.
Yeah, well, we've got, we've had all that. Well, we're doing the commercial.
A lot of it says, yeah, to the small.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see, I should have told you. We did, did call over there and trying to. There's a video I had.
I made a little packet, I've got stuff here.
Yeah, I mean, just.
I already did, and I got two packages, you want to pop off?
Yeah.
All right, I only got two packages, so I'll give you that in a while. Wasn't sure. So I thought, get some, better than that.
CEO job. That is um. Yeah. Okay. I know the new position. I'd like to. CEO. CEO.
Yeah. Not my favorite job.
Those other people through the stage today? At the end?
Yeah. Sorry, guy, I know.
No. I got you guys, I'm trying to clean and they're falling behind.
Okay.
Trying to keep up with the night.
Oh, no, she's so nice, she has her. Yeah, she's so nice.
It's long days.
You know, the secretary gives.
I'm pulling in that.
Yeah, Saturday, I will, I already left.
Or somebody, the last year, so it's not out here all, if you just ask to wait out all the days.
Yeah.
Usually wait out the need, so it's pretty good, yeah. And then. Because, so she said, wait it off, and then nominated.
That's.
Are we done yet?
Here related to me, I just.
Into the computer, that's.
Yeah, she just provided the.
Are we ready?
Something you have eyes on the other side too, or just stares at Louis?
That's one left.
No, it's just there, not you, but it looks three sixty.
We convene at eight thirty seven. He's a who? Zoning report.
I think you had the report there, um, a couple issues that you brought in your I L. There's some clarity and. So that's gonna be addressed, I think, I don't know, your, your timeframe's looking at. It's not gonna get done this year, I mean, it may get passed, but obviously enforcement is gonna not come until later on. So what, what, what's your thought on?
What's that?
What's your thought on that, as far as a procedure for a special use permit?
I would have to look at that, uh, basically the special use permit. Uh, for exceptions, we're gonna need two of them. We're gonna need a form, basically for S T Rs for exceeding the capacity. Okay, which is written into the ordinance, up to three times per calendar year. Okay, and something like this for commercial use of township property.
Here, here's just my, my initial thought on that, why don't you just make it, it's a use permit, if you have. Uh, planning commission board or something, they have to bring it to them, present it to them, and then they can make the decision, you know? Make their recommendations to the regular board.
I'm, I'm, I'm sitting there thinking, um, it would be.
Instead of a blanket special use permit, because like you said, there's different uses for, it's not just the kayak.
Right.
So like, then you brought up like, let's say like a non-propercy that wants to use it. So I mean, we can't have the same all the way across the board.
No, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is the, the planning commission, uh, basically, a lot of work to do. Um, a review on the ordinance is updating them, so, uh, does. If we create a special use permit for such. Issues, it should come to you and come to the board. Period, you know, so that the board makes the decision.
That's what I mean, instead of just creating a policy that says X, Y, Z. Make it work, if somebody wants to do this, they have to bring it to the zoning administrator. And the zoning administrator brings it to the planning commission, you know what you're kind of thinking?
No, the zoning commissioner would bring it right here to the board.
Just circumvent planning. Okay.
Yeah.
I, 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 I don't.
Whether it's commercial or, or whether it's an exemption to.
And that's fine, and just as long as we get a policy, you know?
Right, so, and, and I'm thinking, the board makes the final decision anyway, why involve another month of the planning commission? You know? Somebody wants a response, uh, you get it on the first, the third Thursday of the month, it comes to us, and it's a yay or a name.
Well, I can, I can make a point with them and say, you know, bring, bring your case to me and explain why you wanna do what you wanna do, then I can.
And then your recommendation, just an email to the board with, with the, the attached special.
And, and the board could obviously make a determination on the price.
Right.
So you're establishing a procedure for how you're gonna do that, but what is the policy? The policy needs to be written out and it needs to be occurred.
Right.
Then how many permits are you?
Yeah.
Because now you got.
So, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a special use, it would be a special request.
There you go.
But if there's five, that's what we do to start the request, like now you got five.
Well, that's just how that, we can look at it and say, hey, we've had, you know, eighteen of these, right? We can't accept anymore, and, and that special request is denied because of these reasons.
Well, and that, and that's the whole thing about uh having these uh kayaks dropped off at these lake, lake accesses. Is that, that you gotta be fair across the board, that like, we shouldn't even allow it, in my opinion. They should be able to use the boat launches, I mean, that's what, that's what they're there for, that eliminates that whole problem.
The board wants to do that, I would do so.
I, I mean, it sucks for them, but businesses are the one making the money.
Then, then we just gotta take that out of the ordinance instead of special permit.
Yes, yes, we would have to change.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that either.
It actually is a board. The board can change that language also. It doesn't need to go back to the planning commission.
No, it doesn't. But anyway, a special request.
The, the benefits to us as a township.
And then basically.
As, as a business, don't even in there. They pay a giant taxes to the township nor to the county.
Right, right, the only thing that there would be for would be this, this. But I don't know, I don't think that justifies the means because once one does it, they're all gonna want to do it. And then, you know, we're really letting the township, our citizens down by letting them hog all the spaces or what, whatnot.
Ten years ago, there was no kayak parking lot, yeah.
I understand.
With, with the closure of the boat launch now at the bridge. Other people that do commercial operations are using the public accesses, not, not very much, but I see the deal.
And, and one once does, you know, they're all gonna start doing it, I mean, once they can.
Fact of the matter is, this one has gotten some weather.
And even at that, they're required to get a special permit from the D N R to run a commercial access from that site. So they have, it's already, I mean, no matter where you go, you have to have a permit. But the boat launch, like you said, that is, the boat launch, that's what that's for.
Yeah, that would eliminate this one.
The D N R lady that runs that has publicly said that when these permits run out, they're not gonna redo them.
They're what?
They're not gonna redo them for the public access sites.
The new ones that they're building?
Once they run out, some of them are, you know, written forever and ever, but she's gone on record saying that.
Yeah, I've heard her say that too.
And because it's boat registration that pays for those public access sites. Not fuel taxes, not driving money, it's boat access, you know, excess tax on boats and gas and all that pays for that. So, you know, they're, they're getting overrun by, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to mention any names, but I'll tell you what, the pontoon boys down there are pushing their luck.
Yeah.
When they, next time they tell me to move over so they can launch it, but they're doing a business.
And that's the car problem too.
That's true too.
And the fact of the matter is. If, if you, if you out buy, they're gonna do it anyway. Okay, now you write up a citation, that costs a hundred and fifty bucks. They just tack that onto the next customer, okay, and they do it. Okay, and they do it again.
Well, I mean, the fine, the fine's gonna go up. Anybody can get around anything, but we have to set a precedent that, and no, it's not a lot of business, this is for public. It's for the township, right?
Right.
Not for somebody else that's in a different township.
So anyway, something in the next part that's just gonna deal with it, but we should give them some.
Well, we could deal with it, and then it'd be effective for next, uh, January or whatever, I mean, we could easily, we could easily deal with it.
Yeah, but I won't give them deal with it, that's a.
Well, we take out the special permit and just leave everything as it is. There's no.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we remove, and I don't, I don't have the word.
I have the. I have it here somewhere. Amendment two. No commercial canoe, kayak, livery, or any other non-motorized business shall use any public access site. Or township park for commercial use. Period. Strike. Unless by special permit. Okay.
We've only aligned to special permit, right?
Hmm, you drew a line to special permit?
Yeah.
You'd unless by special permit, I just drew a line right through it and put a period at the end of commercial use.
And we can do an effective date, right, from January twenty five. Without them.
Well, yeah, that would.
Be official, because we already told the gentleman he could.
Well, this amendment shall become effective thirty days after being published in a newspaper of general circulation within township. Okay, that'll take two weeks. Plus thirty days, yeah, that's six weeks, that gets you to October first, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to strike. From subsection four Q. Of. Parks and Recreation Ordinance Number Twenty. Put a period at after the. Commercial use and strike the language unless by special permit. I have a second, second. Did you get that? In that, one of the.
I'll, I'll get it when I listen to it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I tried to get it.
Okay.
Is that implying they can, is it probably the same thing, it's implied that they can get a special permit? Is that, are we doing the same thing?
Taking the special permit language out completely.
Okay, I thought you read that after you struck it. Want to read it again? I thought when you read it.
No commercial kayak, canoe, kayak, livery, or any other non-motorized business. Shall use any public access site or township park for commercial use.
Period, okay.
Period. And that strikes the language unless by special permit.
That's, I mean, you added that at the end, so is that.
You know what, that's, that's the original language, I just drew a line through.
You still have to remove this too. Permits will be issued for Cedar Street or Burke Street.
Okay, so strike, strike that whole sentence. Strike everything after commercial use.
Yes, everything goes.
Yes. So that will be part of the sign that gets created. All right. Now are we ready for roll call?
Yes.
Now, the. Do you have something else to add?
No, you're, you're.
Oh. Tom Backers?
Okay.
Yes.
Bert Bradley?
Yes.
John Childs?
Yes.
Albert Keys?
Yes.
Christine Thompson, yes.
No, I was gonna go to the next subject.
And the new sign should reflect that, no commercial use of public access. Or township property, period.
Okay. Your term rentals, still issues, I know you guys are addressing it, which is good, but I'm still getting quite a few phone calls, emails on it. Uh, I'm basically referring to, to you, I'm saying technically, there's, there's a moratorium until there's a decision made on it. Cause I'm. Acceptable.
Yeah. Actually, they ran that under review, the office says, they're illegal. It's not legal, I should say.
Actually, people already asked for the permit to fill out the permit.
Okay, the other thing I forgot to mention. You asked me, uh, about, uh, what we can do to enforce certain ordinances like, uh, nuisance, that kinda stuff, abandoned buildings. Uh, I did, uh, mention that when I left the voicemail forward to lawyer, and as soon as he gets back to me on that, I want something in writing. So, uh, so we have some options as to. What this township board can do legally. To enforce certain ordinances that we have, put some teeth in them.
I've been trying to get some answers from the health department, cause I thought they might be an asset in some, you know, cause there's a couple places I know that. They don't have indoor plumbing, they don't do sewage in a tank outside the house. I mean, it's potential, it's a health issue, so I'm waiting on somebody to get back to me on that. I did speak to the sanitarium, because that was a big concern as well, as far as with the short-term rentals. You know, I have thirty people in the house that's designed for eight, you know? Uh, basically, I was told unless it's overflowed, they're not doing anything. So, I, I'm still trying to go down and have to with the health department, maybe there's still something there.
Can I, can I ask? Can I ask, uh, uh, these complaints you, you're getting, wh- what's the locations?
Of the, of too many people?
Oh, oh, well, the, the complaints generally, where are they coming from? As far as location.
Crystal Beach there.
Yeah, I mean, those types of complaints, it's primarily from my resident, who's buying.
What is it, Crystal Beach, is it?
Yeah, majority of my Crystal Beach.
Okay, I just do, I, I do, I really wanna stress this, because this is. Even though. If this short-term rental gets passed, I just wanna say to the board, you can put restrictions in this thing. Like. We all know that that area is so congested already, I'm just saying, you can look at restricting the areas. Okay, I just wanna put that out.
Okay, um. Good night. Office, uh, while we're on this, okay, subject. Uh, Hill in the Township here has an ordinance where you can't park boat trailers downtown, somewhere. Okay, I would like to see the same thing on Harvard Trail. Because the state has ten acre down there, that they refuse to expand the parking lot. Cause we let them park on the road, you know, this might be a way to force the DNR stand. And spend some money.
But they expanded it, what, two or three years ago, they expanded more, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically, what we got would be, uh. Uh, basically, a new ordinance stating that there be no parking of.
Anything.
No vehicle with trailers, vehicles with trailers on any. I talked to the, yeah. Period, yeah.
How about just a trailer by itself?
About a what?
A trailer out there by itself, no park was good, I've seen one park.
Yeah, that would do that.
On torture of a road, it's been there for over a month or so, just the trailer itself out there.
Well, you know, the other, that's on the other side of it.
I know, but.
Does it have? Does it have a for sale sign on it? Okay.
Our, uh, trail had one, I think, that was on the line about.
I know, I, I know that. But yeah, that would be, you just write the line, finish it, pass the article.
So who would enforce that?
Well.
That's why we hire. That's why we hire a deputy.
That, the deputies, the sheriff's department has said they will enforce our ordinances.
Well, they're not doing it down where I live, with the parking. My husband has four different cops down there to move a car that they illegally parked, and they always said, well, we'll let someone else do that when we walk by. They weren't enforcing it at all.
Was that the fourth July, you could?
I think it was the week after.
Well, that's something.
It's too busy.
That's something you, you bring to the board and.
Ask them further.
We, we can actually ask the deputy that's here every month.
Yeah.
Why this is happening, and I'm sure he's gonna go back and say.
Yes, I'm, he was like, can you start with my neighbor? She's elderly, and she sits in her house, and she asked him, and they gave her a hard time, so my husband went out there and tried to get a cop, give him a ticket. He could, he bored of her cops. They're all just telling them, well, let someone else do that, let that someone else do that. So.
Give me this.
Just a thought.
Sending a straight.
I, I have a question for John.
Yes.
As far as the trail cans, how are they working?
Good, you can ask Craig.
Over, overage data.
I'll, I'll let you talk about the trail.
Oh, the trash cans?
Yeah, the cans, the trail cans working.
Oh, trash cans, oh, yeah.
It's in there, okay, okay.
No, I mean, I, I'm pleased, they did exactly what we were hoping they would do. That's huge.
But it's not doing it all.
I did have, I was up there. When I put them up there, I wasn't, there's a caution truck, I don't be low-key, but it. And then I'm just kinda sitting there watching, and some kids are climbing on trees, and they started climbing on the one. Camera. So I told, hey, you guys touched it, number one, they've already got a picture, and it goes right to the sheriff's farm, so. They haven't touched it, but I moved it anyways.
Oh, my gosh.
Uh, they're doing very well. If nothing happens, that means they're doing really well.
Okay, Angie.
Okay, so cemetery, hi, I did find, you know, we talked about two maps, I called for it, they didn't call me back, I called a couple times. And it seems like other people have called, and they haven't called back. I found two different maps, one is different from the other, and it's in the newest, the newest section. Uh, five fifty-three to six thirty-three is where they're going to have all the problems. Um, the other map has no walkways like the other one did. Craig, I gave, I found a map that has all the markers, so he can use that when he's.
Marking.
So, yeah.
Measurements.
And so I gave you maps, uh, the map, the new, uh, area of the graveyard, the one that's wrong has no walkways, the other one is more recent one. So I think that my stuff, literally the two maps, and the one map that didn't have the walkways, and no dates on it or anything like that, I think it's maybe like a program that they just printed out. To put the numbers in to do something. So I think it's just the one map. Um. So I can close that, and then, um. Giving me very exciting locations, it's continued to be a, um, group problem with funeral homes. They send, uh, they call. Uh, me and expect me to know where the family wants it. We're exactly the place that's, which one they want. So I've talked with the funeral homes that we deal with mostly, uh, that's Calcasca and the Wolf Funeral Home in Calcasca, it's been the most recent. And I've sent them a form that I'm starting to use, and I put that form in there too, and that helped me a lot. Um, a lot of people will call, and they're not related to them, so I say, no, I'm only talking to. The, the person in charge of the will, or who's making all the planning, I don't want any's calling, this and that. And then one needs to, well, I'm helping his son, so I said, the son has the right to email that it's okay, or call me. So we did that, the problem we had, the workflow is broken about finding the lots. So I said, you either send me that form completed or started, or you call me and let me know, and give me the name of the family so we can work on it. And then if I feel that they need to go out to the cemetery, I'll get ahold of Craig, and he can go out there and show them, cause it has so many mistakes for people, like the one man that we had to move. His wife knew there was something wrong. So I think if Craig might have gone out with her earlier, and showed her where it was, she would say, no, this isn't right, you know? So I think that's a good thing to do, and listen very clear, like. Uh, you knew where your mom was supposed to be, that's not a problem, but with her mom, I just got the burial transmittal, and again, there's, nobody called me from. Calcasca Funeral Home, told me the plot or anything like that, they'd expect us to know, I guess. And then they expect, the sexton expects him to know where they are, and he doesn't even know where they are either.
Well, in a lot of cases, they don't have a number.
Yeah.
They don't even have an area of the cemetery that they remember being in. Cause I asked you, what is it, New Sight, is it up on the hill, is it down below? I don't know, it's been a while since I've been there.
They do have a receipt book. Okay?
We have a receipt book.
For the cemetery, specifically.
Yeah.
Alright, so you should be able to look up the name and the plot number.
Oh, I can find, that's not a problem.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
But then he's gotta go.
With the family, that tells you the A, B, C, or D.
And the person who bought the plot may not be the person that they're trying to bury, so they tell you, I'll use my brother-in-law for example, I spent a week. Looking for my brother-in-law's grave, and then found out it was his grandpa Finney that bought it. And so if it wasn't Robinson, I was hoping it was Finney. And that caused a problem too, cause in some cases, they don't even know who originally purchased the lot.
And the only person that can make a decision is the owner of the plots.
Yeah, or the executor, somebody who's been.
And he's had.
When Joanne, we had to talk to her brother. Because he was the executor. To verify, did she wanna be here before I could call Pete and give him go ahead.
But then he didn't give back to me. So I'm trying to work on that workflow, that's if, first thing, I'm just totally amazed, if funeral home can send a body out there, but they don't know where it's going. That's the first thing. That just doesn't make any sense to me, but, so we're trying to get that information back to the office. And I think one is saying, I'm giving back with funeral home, saying, uh, you know, I don't really do that, you need to fill out this form, and I'll keep doing that. Cause it's very frustrating on my end, because then I gotta send friends, I've, you know where this goes, and most of the time, you can find it. But, you know, we're paying a lot of money for them to go out there and market, very spots, and then have them go out again. So that's another thing I put in there, most places charge a fifty dollar burial fee. When you think about the hard work, handling out, meeting with the family, me doing my thing, and following through. Fifty dollar burial fee, but you don't have to do that.
I just got a question for the board, shouldn't that be the sexton job? To go out and, and find it, market?
It's not, that's not the way to go, I mean, maybe. I was, I had to ask, I have to talk to sexton, and, you know, I talked to him one day, cause I had to figure out, what is the workflow, and I realized it's broken. Um, but he says he doesn't even know where he's burying it, he relies on him. I'm like, well, what if he has two things open up there at one time, he doesn't know where to go, but.
The guy who digs for us, um. Does approximately a hundred and twenty cemeteries in Northern Michigan, and he literally cannot.
We don't have time to do that.
Every, and so he relies on the people in the township. When he'll, he'll get a call, and if, and sometimes he will have a number, sometimes he doesn't. Very rarely does he have an A, B, or C.
Yes.
Maybe, you know, but he'll call and say, hey, can you find this for me, flag it out, and take, and I take pictures of where it's at. And then I send him the pictures, and then they can come and find it from there. We had a funeral home, put a, they didn't call to have me flag anything out, and didn't call her. And this morning, uh, a family member went out there and the foundation and the plaque was in the wrong spot on the wrong grave. And before I could even get out there, he was on the phone with the funeral home, and said, I've got it written out, you know? But he called us and was complaining that this was, had happened, and that's not really plus. I mean, it's not really, once, once they're, the flag is flagged out, and, and it's been determined that that's the right spot. I mean, it's not really, once, once they're, the flag is flagged out and and it's been determined that that's the right spot. That's kind of the end ball. Our obligation, we don't handle the foundations or the stones.
So basically, what you're saying is your need, you establish a communication chain. Okay, and we need to put it in writing.
Yeah. It's just, I'm kinda going, I kinda pick the local ones. And then as they call me, I'm saying, okay, come here. I'm sending you these forms and it is completed, or I ask them.
That's all the problems that she provided.
Yes, I ask them, you know, uh, does the family know exactly where they're, I'll ask funeral home. Do they know where they wanna bury them? Well, we thought you would figure that, you know, find it for them. But I can't do the A, B, C, or D. And we don't know, you know, i- i- it's that, that's a good thing to do, you know? Just give me the people's names, I'll call them up, talk to the family. If I have a feeling that they're not really sure where they're gonna go, then I can come up with Craig. The problem is, it's like with her mom, I got her transmittal, she, there was no, no, no plot, no lot. I was able to figure it out, but the Sexton gets the transmittal sheet and I'm not getting them from him. They just send that transmittal sheet right to me through funeral home with no numbers on it or letters. So if I missed it and it's like a double check, I, I gotta send him back out there and try to find it for me.
My dad was married, buried in B, he was supposed to be buried in A, that was in two thousand eleven. And so we solved it, cause it didn't really matter. We put mom on C and went under the ground, so the headstone's over here, but no one knows what's under the ground. So we were okay, I was gonna do any, let's get this one out.
Not everybody feels that.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so some of the complaints I've heard is like junk left on the graves, beer cans, fishing pole, gold plastic flowers. Um, loitering, ATVs tearing around in there, I don't know what you can do about that. Um. Might, we had problems with finding this in the wrong place, which we got that figured out. Um. Friends of the, well, I've been there, I don't need to go on that. Uh, and then the parks issue, you, you did that with the rentals of the condos. I was thinking about maybe getting a silent runner so that if you ever get another runner, it wants to print Burke Street again. A pavilion, have a thing right, right in front of the pavilion, just as a private party and have our name on there. So, eh, people just will be, you know, I'll give the people that are renting it a number to call, you get a problem? Yeah, it was a disaster, it sounds like.
Yeah.
And she got pushed back from, you know, the company that was doing that. Um, so the latest thing was when the guys wanted to rent our, um. Freedom Park East. And he wanted to know what the quality of the water was. And it came up above the, out, it came up that water hadn't been tested for a while. Looks like the old Venus guy did that. So I got a water company come out and everything tested fine except for Freedom Park West. That's contaminated, you know, equal light. Kind of thing in it. And there is a, a thing that they said you could treat it, but they're saying that our pumps are so old, they're from the nineteen seventies. They probably need to be replaced. So even if you clean that one on the west side of Freedom Park, it probably wouldn't work.
It's broke right now, right?
Well, I think that's part, no, they got water out of it.
It works, we have an unviable sign on there.
Yeah.
And then I just, the way he couldn't order, he couldn't hang the sign right on it, which I wanted. So I just ordered another one, it's like a thing that fits around the piping. So that should be helpful.
Can I get a, can we get a quotes for new pumps?
You'd need the new pump, you'd need the, uh, rods. And probably a new plant.
It's something about the leather inside of it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's old enough that the, um. Now, now they use rubber to create suction or silicone and then they use leather. And leather tends to hold bacteria and it's.
So if we replace the pump handle, well, the pump, the pump itself actually without replacing the rod. And treated the well.
Okay, I'm sure you could treat the well and and have it come out or we can use it. But like, um, I have a, a, a. The second edition of the, uh, how to care form. But. It, we, we probably have to replace the whole pump, we're not gonna get just the silicone piece to fit.
No, no, I'm talking about the entire.
The entire pump, we should be able to then treat it.
Is that welded in place, are the nuts? The anchor nuts welded? Or can you break them loose?
You'll know it has that.
Probably not gonna break this down easy.
You'll be surprised what a little bit of heat can do.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we, why don't we ask for quotes?
Uh.
Put it in the paper for quotes.
What, to have that replaced?
Have them both replaced.
Uh.
Heritage Park, I think was it Heritage Park, no, yeah, Heritage Park, the zone has a pump.
Freedom Park East and West both have pumps and the Burke Street Pavilion has a pump.
Right.
Um, they were fine.
Check around, call around and, uh, find out what the pump itself, well, would cost to replace.
I can ask the.
What could be ordered from?
People, the people that touched our water, they probably give me a good idea of like.
It's just gonna surprise.
And if we're gonna change it ourselves, I'm, I believe someplace off northern, we can order a pump. I mean, I've seen them, I just don't.
Oh, I know, I mean, would it be something that you would, you would be capable of doing or should we have somebody come out and do it?
Well, we'd have to get a look at it and see how, because I wasn't looking at it.
While you're looking for prices, go out and check out what's involved.
What the pump costs and then what somebody else would charge us to.
Well, I just.
And see what the.
I think we need to commit to have somebody else do it, right?
Then, yeah, they would probably treat it much quicker and, and we'd have fallback in case something was wrong.
So I, yeah, I think that that.
I know there's probably not a ton of companies out there, but, but find out who the, uh.
Yeah.
Who tested the water, was that the public health?
It's many people that test the buildings.
Test the buildings, I had them do it, cause I had a guy coming soon.
Call them and ask for some contacts.
Yeah, I bet towards that.
Yeah, that's true too.
Your pals are charged like once a year.
I'll call Stuart and see what, so you were.
Well, when they come out, I never particularly let them in here, uh, the county hall was open, then I let them in the parking department. Um. And what we'll do is just from now on, take them around to the pumps, they'll have to test. Either that or give the addresses if they want to be directed, you know, I mean, they want me to take them out there. But we just have to have it, if we wanna have it without an unviable sign, we have to have it tested every year.
Yeah, they're supposed to be tested every spring. So.
Um, so other things, uh, I know we were talking about bringing the ballpark back and, um. I just need to kind of. Get like a feeling about what we should be charging, how we're gonna charge them. You know, I'm gonna charge them the same as we do here, when someone has this or pickleball players. You know, are we gonna charge for season, things like that.
Did you have an old price somewhere for?
No, they never charged.
They never charged for usually.
Right.
So.
Single runner.
Pardon?
We never got any greater at the park, oh.
Yeah, so I got a couple of calls, I told them to go look at the field and get back with me and no, we got back.
Cause they're not ready yet.
Yeah, one was like a little tight screw and I, you know, I thought she would be as particular, but she never called me back.
But we did have a team earlier.
I mean, you don't wanna, you know, uh, charge them, I just need to know that. And then I need to figure out on my end how to put them in the calendar, you know, I don't double look at them, that'll be nerdy.
Well, pickleball doesn't require any maintenance, like the ball fields. So. What do we charge for pickleball?
Well, it's, if you're in, for a lot of times, eighteen dollars for two hours. But I thought maybe if it was going to go all hard type of stuff, it might be lower. And they would be too much money myself.
No, I, I think.
I was wondering if I should do a.
I mean, it's a public parks, I, I think anybody in the township, especially if there's a league or if they're getting into it, I don't think they should be charged at all.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's my opinion, this is my opinion, because that's what they're, this whole, the park, the softball parks are for the township, it's for our community. Why in the hell would we charge them? You know, they're already paying taxes.
I mean, if they were being used a lot, I would think that we would have to reserve it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Same with the pavilions, like, now with the pavilions, then they know that.
If they're out of town, I can see a fee, right?
Yeah.
Cause they're not paying any taxes.
Well, if they wanna run a softball tournament or baseball tournament or something.
Kinda looks a different, cause people ate.
Well, something to think about anyhow, that's what. And then another time I've had is like, we do this open to, open to the public free. So I open up the doors for these people on a routine basis, they don't pay anything. One had one guy, he, he comes three times a week with his family, he didn't even tell me he went on vacation for two weeks. And I told him, next time, if I, if I find this happens again, I'm canceling your session and you're gonna have to start paying money. And that's the only way I can think, I, and you know, it takes a lot of work for you to set up lots every week and everything, time and effort. But then that, so I figured, you know, give them a chance, one mistake, and then after that, you're done. Then you're gonna be canceled, so I'll try to go with this one guy that did it. Um, so the product for Spectrum is all complete, so they said. Um, and then I wrote in here about me not being able to get ahold of Stanley back then. And Joanne did call me, did return her call. And I talked to him, he's gonna work on the problem I'm having. Um, he was deleting my messages I was sending to him. And then sent it back that he was busy. He, uh, will give me back a callback, I called him, he never called back. I called customer service and they sent, it was boss and him, I never got a callback. But what I'm trying to do is, we got an extra phone in Township Hall. Um, the phone, and I already had Spectrum call off service, cause that was the one I thought, well, they're gonna be there. Only we didn't have phones, but they do. And I don't know why we got a sixth one, I still haven't figured that out, but. Um, I asked them to turn off the service, but I just needed Stanley to stop the service cost. And when I called customer service, which Stanley didn't tell me, at first I got told, get away to, everything's done, the whole project's done. So I waited until that, Sarah called Stanley and then called customer service about taking that off. They told me they can't do it, Stanley has to rewrite the contract. And when I sent him an email telling him all this, that's when he started deleting my messages. And so I did talk to him today and he says he's working on it, we'll see if he calls me back again. So, um, with the help of Derek and everything, we figured out, we stopped one of his bills, saved about two hundred and fifteen dollars. So that worked really well. And another thing I found out from the service center, when Stanley wrote the contract. Um, he should have wrote in there, getting rid of all the old phones, we spent a lot of money, cause we were thinking they just continue to even think. So I was putting in the phones, get rid of your old phone, right? No, he didn't put it in there, so we had to go in and do that ourselves. And that's been an effort. But I keep calling back. Um, then the, the other thing is they sent us a, a thing about. Uh, equipment that needed to be returned, couldn't find the equipment, I got all the numbers and serials. I had the reading there, I'm very proud of myself, I can control this from across the street now, the lots. I had some terrace and spectrum there. And while they were there, there was some talk and they were asking them questions, that box was upstairs still being used and we paid for it.
The box for?
Spectrum, they said that I had to return and they sent us a bill for it. I put it in reflections, it's upstairs being used. That, well, that's spectrum, I mean, I'm just sorry, that's the way they run. Um, so the guy who sat terraced the unplugged it to see if it affected everything and it did, so we had to plug it back in. And, uh. I think that's it. So I've been.
I, I just. If you're having problems with spectrum. You've already signed the contract, I would think that would fall on our supervisor, find out what the heck's going on. I don't think it's your job.
It's not my job, but I'm the one that opens the bills and drives me crazy. I mean, he can, um.
She, she basically notified me of the spectrum thing. Uh, and her problems with Stanley, okay, and said she was working on it, no, you got it.
I mean, I was on, two weeks in a row, I was on the phone for at least an hour each time calling up. Just turning off this phone we had here, five calls. You get a bit of a trip and I have to nag her, cause they, they sent us a full bill. Well, we don't pro rate, well, yeah, he's done.
Spectrum is a layered drat receiver with half a dozen people making, trying to make one decision and they're all pointing fingers at each other.
All in different states.
When we were trying to find in, we were gonna upgrade internet service. John Bielski would try to call, didn't get any calls back, didn't get any calls. I kept persisting and finally they said, well, you, you don't need charges spectrum, you need. Spectrum enterprise. So that's like the big thing, that's not the lower guys down here. That, that's where we finally got connected up with that and that's what I hate. Um, it's like, and I asked him about deleting the emails, he says, no, it's the way that works, come. I don't know anything about all that.
What I can do though, since I don't get any more Stanley, I will come to town.
Cause it might, it might, I just, I think it might make a difference.
Cause the contact person, they all suddenly contact me, cause I'm the one in the office all the time. So then I opened up all of them and I was saying Christine.
But she's so busy, you have to handle all that too. Right.
I mean, I think we're getting maybe.
But having one person contacting all the people and knowing all the details is way better than, you know, several people trying to contact.
Just not, when they're not seeing anything done.
Yeah.
Then it needs to be.
Well, I think I was okay until they started deleting my emails, that's what I'm like.
I don't understand it, but I, I confronted them there.
Dispired apartment issue, was that the double billing for the two phone services?
Well, you can tell me more about that.
You're getting charged for internet, but was that a different address, like they didn't have a regular?
Never had the regular desk, so we don't have to deal with that anymore.
You were getting two bills for the fire department for. Basically, the new line and the old line.
And we got double charged for a long time, cause it took us forever to figure out what was going on.
Did they reimburse us for? The double billing or were we just paying one bill?
No, we were double paying.
We were double paying?
For the regional central and mill pumps.
Are they gonna credit our bill for the double billing?
Well, that's what I was trying to work on here and there. But no, because it was still going on, it was still running, so we're not gonna do that. Because it wa, it was our responsibility to cancel the phone, because the sales rep didn't put that in the contract. We didn't do the right thing.
Well, how long is the contract for?
For years.
Well, I've notified that then the three years, we're gonna cancel it. If that's a make or lose.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I don't wanna say it, but I told you guys.
Absolutely.
Don't do it with the, don't do it with the yellow ones, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Gonna be done, but.
Down to maintenance.
Maintenance. Okay, uh, well. The mowing and trimming is continuing at a higher than normal pace this year, like always, and but it's been getting done. But I also wanted to reiterate that not just mowing and trimming, anybody that wants me to do anything I've done. Or something I see that needs done, I do, um. It's just juggling it in between making the township look nice. I mean. Uh, on the lake accesses, on June nineteenth, July, we had the old rope swing tree, it's been up there for forty years at Brook Street. It's split and was hanging both, two sides been down in water, but still hung up in a tree. Uh, I. Put a, a caution tape around it, because it was already, we, I talked to Tom, we already had twenty or thirty people on the, uh, access at that time. Went back early the next morning, uh, used a pole saw that I own, got it cut. Cut it in manageable pieces, drug it up out of the water, had my son help load it. Couple, took about five and a half hours, but we got it all out of there, everything's, looks good, but there's no rope swing with it anymore. Um. We're still getting a lot of trash, but we're using, we're getting a lot of use on the accesses this year, we've had a nice, it's nice. We have a small amount of household trash that we've been picking up, but I think they're coming from short-term rentals that are adjacent. And that, unless we stick the cameras up there. We still do have the flagstone. We still do have the flagstone and the pea gravel that the short-term rentals next to Lake Street East, considered a value. They have put flagstone to make their sidewalk turn and run across the public access over to the kayak, or the kayak launch. And making it appear that that is their.
I talked to Ryan about that, he was supposed to extend the flagstones to the roadside.
Pardon?
That's Ryan Williams' place. Okay.
That's why it's there?
Well, that's not why it's there, but the, the problem, I said, it, it appears that that's part of your property, and it isn't. I said, make it so that the flagstone comes to the roadside edge.
And his, he's got it running from his bulkhouse over, um, and just making it for his, and this week, uh, I don't, when I was there, because it's kinda difficult to mow pea gravel.
Remember, that never crossed the board at all.
It shouldn't be there. It should not be there, because that's, it's, it's just gonna be there.
Who gave you permission to do it?
Nobody, it's not, it's not over a weekend. And um, I brought Tom's attention to it, and then I put it in a big.
What, what he told me, he said he put the gravel and flagstone down because of the, the mud, basically. And he.
I mowed that area, and that wasn't mud. The mud is where the water starts and goes out. But that's not somewhere you'd be. Now, when I showed back up Monday, they had sprayed weed killer along the edge of the water and across the.
I think we need to contact this zoning, we need to contact this gentleman and tell him to move all the things he's put down. Yeah, he, that, that's.
It's not except, I mean, that's no different than any other person who are adjacent to it. Just making improvements that they feel will enhance their.
Well, plus today, the board didn't have no decision in this. He just made his own decision. It's not even his property, it's township.
Right, yeah, it's public, it's public access.
Right, so.
And we had to tell them, when I first started, we had to tell them to quit spraying weed spray, or weed killer.
Yeah.
Along the access, and they, they said, well, we do it because no one takes care of the access. And I said, somebody's paid for it now. Stop spraying. And they did it up until this last weekend. They did a bit of spraying because there was weeds that are, I mean, that start to come up with the pea gravel. I'm sorry.
Did you see what they used? There is a vinegar that people use that will kill.
Well, okay, and that, I mean. Can excuse them, that they might be some environmentally friendly, when they wouldn't have to spray it in the first place. If they hadn't put their stuff down and I could mow it.
I guess I just.
Right.
I'm just, I'm, we're, I'm, I'm just sorry, I'm getting tired of making excuses for these people. So that they can go ahead and keep going, because they're friends or family or somebody. It's just, it's just not. If I did it, y'all would make me undo it. So, let's make him undo it. I'm not trying to be a jerk, I'm just trying to, I will abide by the rules and the ordinance of this township. Just like I'm expecting everyone else to.
So what are we gonna do?
I'll call on the boss.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, then the cemetery, we've had an unusually high amount of activity out there. It seems like we've lost a lot of people this year. Um, we just sit back, and we've had to go back and forth flagging things where, um, where the foundations will go and to to not have what happened this morning or yesterday, whenever they put it in the wrong spot. Uh, Mortensen's never called me. Uh, the gentleman, uh, Mr. Decker came in yesterday and said, hey, have you heard anything about the, my, our headstone? And I said, that's not gonna do it. I said, Mortensen or whoever will call us and have us flag the spot, and that's the first thing I'll know about. He came back this morning, or called Angie, and was really upset, because not only was it not in the right spot, it wasn't even on the right grave. And, but we got that straightened out, he's all good. Um, she's right with the maps, we were working off two or three different sets of maps. And none of them had the dimensions on them. That's how the one gentleman got buried in the wrong spot. We worked off a map that showed the two feet in between the graves, when there was actually six feet in that area. And so we lost it, we were twelve feet off. We look at, um, well. And that's basically our thing, is just, it's the amount of time we've spent mowing and flagging out the cemetery. It's just, it's just what it's been. Uh, we still have a little minor, what I call vandalism, with the people spending donuts in the garage, and doing, they'll do little stupid stuff. But, since we got those cameras, and I don't know who talked to who, doesn't matter. The weekend that he went and bought them, I picked up human waste out of those fresh cans. He put them up, we have not picked up, now this is three weeks in a row, we have not picked up neither Mondays or Fridays, we have not picked up any human waste. It's been nice, because that stuff is got all.
Did we see who did it on the cameras?
That fucked us up, and said, they've got cameras out there now. And it's just all of a sudden came to a halt. And it's not being put in the back, it's not being put on Freedom East. I, my hope is that they're dropping it in this dumpster over here, trying to just, to, to keep any trouble down, but if, if those cameras, uh, the deterrent that we wanted, and, and a point where we get some time in, where we get, get assistance, where we don't have any, and then if we have to move them to do other things, we can do that.
Right.
Um.
We might wanna buy a couple.
We were, we were flagging heads that needed to be looked at. Uh, I was out at Heritage. And I was coming back in the morning, and the flags were just being put anywhere. We have a large amount of people golfing in our parks, both Freedom West and Heritage. I pick up twelve to twenty golfers, uh, between the two of them. Um, I love golf, it's a big sport in Rapid City, I guess. Um, there does seem to be confusion about watering the trees at Heritage Park. Maintenance has said on many occasions that we would water it, we didn't have a problem watering it. Um, there was a complaint that the bags weren't out, and they had been out for over six weeks. I had a conversation with Greg about it, and those bags were out before we ever did our spring cleaning. They were out then, and they were out in the end of, uh, March.
They're out, but.
And.
Were they filled with water?
What's that?
They were out, but were they utilized? Was, was the water?
No, be, because I was at the beginning of the buoy and told that we had volunteers. Okay, now, talk to Parks, or, well, talk to Michael. They had looked back in their time, in their meetings, there was never any mention of volunteers watering. But yet I was told on many occasions that we had, that we had volunteers, that were doing watering. And we need to clear that out, I told them, I will water, I will do it twice a week. Um, from here on out to the end of the year, we're not, I don't care about volunteers, somebody wants to water it, sure, that's up to them. But there was a lot of confusion, and I didn't know what was going on, um. We tried to do everything we can do to make the township better, and I would never have just refused to water trees. That's, I mean, it just wouldn't happen.
But it's something you have to schedule too.
Volunteers, but they, but there's no water source there, so I don't understand.
I take the tank to this part of the. Well, I know, take a lot of meat to water. In Friday, Wednesday, whatever, the tank, a lot of people water it two times.
Because they.
So you fill up the tank once a week, you're good for a week.
Yeah, when we bought a pump, so that, because gravity B takes forever. Oh my god.
And we had a pump before, we were sure.
Yeah, I was, I was really overwhelmed by how long the gravity B, I thought, oh, it's got so much water, it was just rushed right out. It doesn't, does not rush, takes its time.
I learned that.
Um, but we do have a pump, a pump. When I have to fill the tank, going down there, getting it on the trailer, going down there, um, because I do remove it once it's empty, and we've done it twice, because I use, still use the trailer to, to mow, to get around it. Um, the small trailer that was purchased won't hold a full tank of water. Um, I'm afraid if we hit a bump, we'll, we'll be right in a road with broken axle. It's, it's just not built for three hundred and twenty-five gallons times eight, um.
I mean, we should look at another trailers specifically for that.
The one that we use, that we, um, the small one that we have. Uh, we could use one half of that size, just big enough of the tank, and dedicated to it. I brought in, donated a, uh, the black box that they use to ship GI, um, when they're coming back from overseas.
Oh, yeah.
And I put a piece of wood in the bottom, mom in the battery, and the pump is in the box. So that can be mounted right to the trailer itself. Right now, I just take it off and put it aside, but it keeps it all right together. Um. But we, that should not be an issue, the watering should not be an issue, don't let the volunteers do something else.
So, Smoke, you should look for a quote up for a trailer?
Yeah, we could, um, I think.
By the time we need a tractor to fly.
I was gonna say, they'll probably be, be just as reasonable as anybody else for that size of a trailer. I think six feet.
Once we get a water source out there, we're gonna need a trailer and that tank.
Well, you know, you could also use it to water the flowers on the strip.
We, we have, we do have volunteers to do that right now.
There'd be other uses for it that could.
Yeah, but I, I don't think we can expect Greg to be watering the snow.
No, but if you get this, um, yeah, no, I'm not gonna be, and I'm not saying, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I'm, I'm not a follower. I'll be watering the flowers, that's, that's a voluntary thing, but it can be used for that.
Yes.
And I had told Joanne earlier in the year, when she asked me, um, if you take and extend that PVC out and just open it up and drive along the side of the road, you don't have to stop and get out and do, just drive along and let it water. That's what they did at Charlotte Way for years with that, uh, water.
Can you look at, uh, the cost of a trailer?
I can find out this weekend.
We don't have it.
Let you guys know, get put in a couple of boxes and make a decision there, um, blah, 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 blah. Northwest lock has been called, and we're on their schedule, we don't know when. Um, but this door is, uh, not closing properly open. We had the same issue over there, they installed a new closure that it closes it gently, and then when it gets to a certain point, it pulls it closed. Uh, the quote was, the girl couldn't break it apart, she was going off the, the, uh, what they charged us for the door over at Township Hall. And that's when we had, they, when they removed the lock out of the door and did all that, and so they had to put all that back. She said on, uh, on a low note, three hundred dollars, included, that's the labor and everything, at worst case scenario was four ninety.
I told them to order.
Yeah.
And so I called them, told them to put us on the schedule, come out, we need that door to be closed. Uh, the old John Neer has been taken in for service. Um, it just, it wasn't money, it was start and die, start and die. I haven't heard anything back from them, it's been about two and, two and a half weeks. Somewhere in there. And they told me, we were about two and a half weeks out. So I'm expecting they should start working on it, either they have in the last couple of days, or they will. Um, I'm also, uh, and that's when we can use a bucket to place the rocks, start removing some of that fencing. Um, that's the biggest thing, we talked to the rock, uh, the Hendersons, he's ready to do deliveries as soon as we're, we're able to put them in place. Um, I would like you guys to do a performance review. It's get to the end of your term, some of you. And I can't be left to the new board to do something until I've actually performed for them. Um, and on the same note, I'm, I'm putting in a request for a raise. Whatever in a month, at a time to start, whatever denied or whatever is on you guys. But I'm making that request as a stay time for the performance review.
That would be have to be a part of the budget, so.
And, and that's what I said, I know maybe you have to start, I think our last one had to start naming.
Yeah.
But, but it's down in, that I, I have made the request, that's all I wanted to do. Um, I think I'm done here.
Okay.
Unless you have more questions.
How about the Division Street fence, did you look at that, or?
The what?
Division.
The Division Street fence.
We discussed with Parks, and we discussed replacing split rail when it's broken down with rocks. So, but I believe the email wasn't.
People are coming out as profiting, that, that.
Well, here's, here's.
Well, there's rocks involved.
Here's the deal, he suggested basically chain link. The thing about the rocks is, you put them basically across the front at the parking, at the end of the parking spaces, so the vehicles don't drive all the way to the lake.
Yeah, and it's hard to allow me to span it, so that I can drive in and out at the moment, better, easier cleanups.
A lot of the other issues were, uh, property owners approaching on the township public access sites. And I think a chain link fence would be specific from, basically.
Those aren't straight at lumber.
The entry to the lake zone.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't show anyway. And just put the boulders in front to keep vehicles out of the.
Yeah, we're, we don't wanna, we're not using that for the, the property owners.
Replace all those split rail fences with chain link and solve the problem.
But we've had a lot of, um, I've repaired fences most weeks s- since the start of the year, and it, what it appears is somebody has backed into the one on Cedar Street, I think, and broke the pole. We have another one at Division that's broke, that I've actually just screwed to the sign folks at Cedar, to hope to keep it up. Um, I've had to repair the one at Lake Street almost every week. They're getting old, they're getting rotten. Um, and if we put them there, we don't ever have to replace anything again. On the other side of Lake Street, on the value side, there is so little room, when you back in, we have a kayak launch there. When you back in with your kayak, you're either over the top of the fence, or if you give yourself enough room to unload your kayak or in front of your vehicle down the road. And all I wanna do, pull that old fence that's broken anyway, and just maybe back it up about two feet with the rocks, you know, just from two feet from where the fence is now, so that people can get in there. And then when they're standing there, they can unload it over the top of the rock, they can stand right there. Um, and it'll never have to be replaced again.
But the, uh, towards Lake Access site, I think, uh, from the parking area back to the lake, should be, all be chain link. If you don't see it from the road anyway, you put the boulders up there to designate the parking area, and giving people enough space to haul a kayak in and out, and that's it.
And for the most part, property owners have already put something up because they were having the, you know, in the early years, they were having people that just wandered. And I, I think all of, our biggest responsibility is to allow the people to the lake. And it's their responsibility to keep people from their private property. But for the most part, there are fences bordering every, every access. Um. Yeah, and, and I, so I don't think, and, and that may be, that's your guys' decision. Um, but I don't think the, the extent of chain link fence, um, I think the rocks stopping them from riding to the water, or from dragging boats to the water, um, that might be what, just what we need.
We have.
And you can't back into a rock for once, you can back into that fence many times.
We have a lot of, well, we do use that old fence that we got from there, we got it on chain link.
Oh, we got it, we, but it's real tall, but we have it, we have huge, three, I think, three huge rolls of it that came out.
We've discussed possibly, maybe next year, think about not parking at Lake Street, have a drop-off. So people go in, fix it, so there's people who need it, you can drop them off, and then they have to go. Because you could, it's hard, when, when maintenance or whatever, when there's so many cars, like, they'll try to pack five cars in there. It's just, it's unreasonable.
So we're gonna remove the fences, put the rods in.
Yeah.
We're not gonna go after like, if the fences, you know, along the edges, it's still good, even though there's property owner fence and not fence, this fence is still good, leave it alone. It's, it's there, there's no sense taking it down until these two, but the, what's going across. The, um, yeah, across.
What's facing the road.
Yeah.
Not the property of.
And, and that's all we're looking at at this point, um, to replace that.
Okay.
All right, and you're waiting on the tractors to get the bucket loaders.
Yes, we get the bucket. Um, and I, I also, I actually think that I'm, Bridge Street or Cedar, one of the accesses, um, I've checked, and there's a nocked rock. Um, I've checked, and there's enough rocks just sitting around. To to use, we don't have to buy any rocks to cover that access at all.
Yeah.
Um, there's enough to just, all we gotta do is move them into place.
Once we get the tractor back, we'll be able to.
As soon as we get the tractor back, yeah, we'll we'll, I'll let you guys know, we'll start, um. And they'll, they'll do it with the rocks to the accesses for us, and drop them right there, and I know what we have to do is move them around.
Do you need anything besides a uh, a quote on, you gotta get, look at a trailer for the water?
I'll get a quote on the trailer.
Is there anything else that you foresee?
I'm sorry.
Is there anything you foresee in the future that you might need?
Um, no, we've got the pump, we've got hose, we've got everything that we need for that.
I'm just talking about overall.
How about it's a new trail cam?
Oh, well, um, yeah, we if.
Public access site in the cemetery.
What's that?
Public access sites in the cemetery, you still have trash?
We're, yeah, we have issues, but I I I don't know if we can cover everything that's.
No, but I mean, you can move them.
Yes, yes, in fact, John and I talked about it, he said we just had to let you guys know, or somebody know.
If you have renters, basically fill it up your garden.
Yes.
Okay, now.
That's, we could move them around to the access sites, I would like to have a couple that we could pop over to the other side of Freedom. Because that's where they're tearing up the grass and doing some of the stuff, um.
Who ordered those, did John order them?
John picked, he actually picked them up because he was. But they're they're a Cabela brand and they're orderable.
Yeah.
He just happened to be going to Cabela's that weekend, so he picked them up.
Well, the thing about it, we can order them, have them shipped too.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can get them shipped.
But so at least, I would, I would suggest two more so that you can move things around. If you're having issues, we can catch people and and fricking act and.
Yeah, um, I I think a lot of the issues we're having on Freedom West side is coming from that house. Right there, I think that's a lot of the the off-road riders and and stuff are coming out of their yard, you know, they're.
Okay, I'll have uh, have John check on two other trail cams, so we can.
Yeah, he, we looked at, I looked back at it, and when I, I I'm not familiar, I. So I went to John and said, you know.
Uh, he suggested?
And he brought up pictures and, um, he said he had had those for several years, they've always worked very well, the pictures were real clear. And so that's what we decided to go with.
So basically, he wanted, yeah, I'll just back to the other person. That's on the Division 10 sign.
Yeah, we could move those around from from access to access, especially over the Fourth of July, that would help a lot.
Well, it's summer months, you know, people dumping trash in the parks and.
Yeah, we had, um, there were days over the Fourth of July that we had twelve bags. Of other people's garbage at Lake Street on top of our own.
Yeah, okay, anything else?
No.
Moving on. Okay, Roads Committee, Public Safety Committee. We already talked about the long parks and rec, ball field maintenance.
Can we, um, next, next month, can we move parks so that it's not very in, can it move up where the committees are? Up further toward the front? Or set a time when?
We have all the committees basically after, uh.
Um, maybe we should move. Just something like that about, you know, where we really start getting the treasure and that.
Yeah. So you wanna move the committees up to?
No, just still, all reports should be in writing, number eight stays there, and just move them parks and rec up under, make them uh.
They can be, they can be named, that we can put the treasure and the clerk at the bottom, that's fine.
We're here all.
Yeah, you got the.
We have to be here.
Yeah.
Okay, so you wanna move the pleasure and the church in the bottom of the agenda. Sheriff's Department, basically the the deputies report.
Yeah, so I can go first.
Other than the hard copy.
I can go first and then perks.
Fire Department. So basically, you would be one of my.
Former planning.
For the planning commission. Okay, so the committee reports, public safety haven't had a report of them in months. So the Road Committee would go.
It'd be nice if we could have, we could tell them what time to be here, also they have to sit through the whole night.
Yeah, right, it would be nice.
Well, they're gonna run for office, they need to know what's going on.
No, I don't mean that, I mean for the different committees type thing, yeah.
Okay, so Roads and Parks would go after the Sheriff's Department, because that's a. That would be filling that space.
Sure.
Alright, so Roads and Parks would go to see. The Sheriff's Department's a written report, we get the deputy to report monthly anyway. Okay, back to ball field maintenance.
Uh, can the Heritage Ball Field, um, we just got to their last meeting. Uh, we're, you're requesting either approval or refinement, because. Um, unfortunately, I had some, I wasn't able to be here last month. Uh, the family interagency, so, um. So I think you guys already approved the position and everything else, um. We kind of kicked it back to us for, um, to make sure that we can fit it in our budget.
Right.
Um, so what we are requesting, pretty well, out of a twenty-five dollar an hour. Wage with a cap of two hundred and sixty hours. Um, for the May first through October thirty-first season of, like, you know, summer.
That would be next year's budget. But all we're looking at is basically getting those ball fields in shape now for the, and actually the park itself.
Right.
Okay, for the remainder of the summer, and getting it buttoned up, but the ball fields need work, the scoreboard needs work. Um, there may be some seasonal use out of them yet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what you're looking at is basically six weeks, and twenty hours a week. For the remainder of the year, because I think we cut it off at October.
Yeah, at least.
Over first, so then you blow out the sprinkler system, shut everything down, and close it up for the winter, okay? So twenty hours a week for uh, six, six weeks.
Up, that's up to twenty hours a week.
Up to, yeah.
That doesn't mean they're gonna, the person's gonna put it.
No, I'm I'm saying this, we're looking at max expense.
So for what do you like to see for the season, averages of ten hours a week? Um, we have allocated that same amount for the remainder of this year. So if whoever ends up.
So you're, you're looking at a maximum between now and October first, with twelve on it.
Thirty first. No, we're not capping.
Okay, so of course, so you add another.
We, we don't wanna have weekly hours, we wanna give whoever's hired the ability to. Put in twenty hours a week, because the spring is gonna be.
Right, right.
And then maybe a little lighter in the middle of the summer or whatever. Um, so two hundred and sixty hour averages to ten hour a week, we have that money set aside. For the remainder of this year, whoever gets hired or whoever's doing it this year, if they wanna get two hundred and sixty hours before October thirty-first. We've got the money allocated to pay them, um, for that purpose. That you talked about getting the ball field back up, just not getting them available, getting some use out of them again this year, um.
So, so basically the priority this, for this, the remainder of the summer and this fall, is getting the ball fields back into a flammable condition. Okay, and and taking care of the, well, basically the pathway.
Is that, is that even possible?
Is it possible?
Yes.
I don't know, there's a lot of work down here.
A lot of work, a lot of hours.
I can do, probably enough to get them in shape with that number of hours, yes. But I get another question, you're talking about just my wages. What about the fertilizer and infield mix, things like that, have you got in the budget to purchase that?
Well, I think, uh.
We, we've got some fertilizer, but not in the, not in the ball fields. There's some, we've, he's got two more to do, I think he did one in the spring.
Basically, there's a thatch and seed and a fertilizer, fertilizer plant into the entire grounds with the exception of the ball fields. I think he did.
I thought he was doing ball.
We're doing the outfield.
I think.
He's not doing the infield, because I asked him if he was able to kill the weeds, he doesn't do that.
No, no, he.
No, but I mean, as far as, as far as fertilizer.
But he's been doing the outfield.
Oh, I'm sure you guys.
Think so.
Yeah, but I, I just asked him about infield, because we need to kill the weeds and he doesn't.
I don't believe it, dude.
Huh? What? Yeah, but we have found that there is a nineteen to twenty percent, and I told him, and I told Craig. A vinegar that they're using, it does, it kills, it'll kill trees, but it does not hurt people.
I'm sorry, I forgot to.
Go ahead.
Anyway. Um, so between the the two candidates that Parks is currently aware of, Andrew Hallbert and Tim Lund. Um, Andrew's been doing a lot of work for the township on a volunteer basis. Uh, and was the original, one of the original members for the D N R grant that was down there, um, when Heritage was built. Um, they both have our recommendation, so whoever the board decides is the better candidate in that, I would say, um. We'll work with them, we'll, you know, support them as much as we can as a committee, and, um. The only thing we would, we're requesting on that note, is any hours that are relieved off of maintenance. Can the board look at allocating. An equivalent amount of fundage to help us, since this. Employees pay is coming out of the Parks budget, can we kind of offset that a little bit? There's anything that is being relieved off of maintenance.
There's basically, uh.
You know, if he's, if it's ten hours a month down there. At whatever he's being paid, can we get that in our budget to offset, or at the twenty-five dollars an hour for this?
That would be, uh. A guesstimate by Craig.
Right, no, and and just.
Well, I have this time, I would have to go back over the past several months to find out what, what kind of.
We could, we could actually document most of that, but I mean, uh, off the top of our head.
There's just something to, something to look at, it doesn't have to necessarily happen this year, again, we've already set aside the full amount.
There's a deal, that would, that would be budget planning for next year.
Okay.
Okay, uh, actually, we're supposed to have a budget workshop in October, kick the ball off. And basically come up with some hard numbers.
Which, time for your budget to be renewed.
Right, now, and then here's the other thing, my suggestion would be rental of the athletic facilities, the gym. And the parks, that fund, that most funds should be deposited back into Parks and Rec Fund. Right now, they're being.
We've never done that, it's always gone to different funds.
Uh, going in, including the general fund, the only general fund rental money, uh, that we should see be from this building. Right, the gym and the parks, uh, and the civilians, okay, all that money, because you're paying to maintain them. Okay, that, those funds should go back into your budget.
Red Parks, you paying the electrical and all that, them too?
No, the electric bill is is, uh, general function bucks for all of them. Why should we, I mean, if you're gonna break it down that.
So, and so, so you do have.
Just make bills.
They're causing a lot of hassle for me.
In the budget, if if, uh, whoever gets hired needs something. It'll be good to know, he won't hit a problem as far as getting.
It depends on what it is, I know that infield mix can get expensive, I don't remember how much it costs back then, and with inflation and everything else. Um. Most of our larger grants are currently focused on Freedom Park East and West, um, and we're waiting to hear back from those. So we did, we did wanna make some motion or some movement, uh, on Heritage. Part of it was ball field and this maintenance position, um, I've also got a couple other. Things to go over, um, in a little bit here, um. But as far, again, it depends on how much it is, I think we're. You know, if it's gonna be twenty-five thousand, let's have the money together.
Mm-hmm.
In our account, you know, or thereabouts, I'm I'm not sure up to date on. Exact numbers of what we got, but I know our budget isn't real big, and I know this stuff gets expensive. Um, so if there is, um. Grants or anything else that we will look into, um, that we're not already currently trying to allocate towards something else that can be forgotten. We're, I think we have a D N R grant that we applied for for Freedom Park, um. I don't think we can double the grants, I don't think we can apply anyways.
We're looking for grant writers.
But we're, we're, uh. Where we're at right now, I don't, I can't say for sure that we can fund everything that Tim ran, or you're gonna need to get those ball fields. Completely, obviously, we may be, we may be able to do bits and pieces of it. Again, I don't know what the numbers are, we haven't, we haven't reached that point yet.
Well, put it in there.
Okay, but is the, their wages is split with our, our. That we're, that we've set aside and that we're not spending that much.
Right.
Maybe we've got earmarked it, so, um. Uh, let's see. Can you continue with some Heritage Park? Topics here, we have, if you have the three packets, I think there's actually four packets, but one of them. Is this, and it's, uh, illustration of colors, uh, black and white printer, so.
Same here.
Same here.
That's, that's alright, um, no decision on colors needs to be made by the board anyways. Um, but we have options, Kelly was kind enough to, uh, reach out, um. You know, we've had it in Lynch for a couple of years, and we wanna show the township over, put in that to good use. Um, so through Sinclair Recreation LLC, um, and they work. With Game Time, uh, play for, they have like playground equipment, they sell. Like massive chunks, they install, they do pretty much everything except for services. They don't do, you know, chunked up tire, they don't do sand, they don't do whatever it is.
They install the equipment.
They install the equipment, they sell the equipment, kind of a one-stop shop. Uh, so we've got a few options here, um, option one was kind of a. A after, either coming straight from our contact at Sinclair. Um, so option one wasn't really possible, he just wanted to show us what he could do. Um, so options two, three, and four are. One that we've identified, um, we are full size. Um, full size playground equipment. And they are both available for a. Certain level of a matching grant. So Sinclair slash Game Time would give us a grant to purchase these, this equipment. The grant only implies the sale price of the equipment. Um, and depending on the size of the piece of equipment they were buying. Some of them are like full packages, you can get, you know, a whole playground basically. In one package, or you can buy pieces individually. Um, and depending on the size of those. Play equipments, packages that we're looking at buying, they qualify for different levels of. The terminal and finding a grant is like forty-eight hours.
Mm-hmm.
So we would know, you guys approve, us moving forward, did one, one piece or the other, whatever. We would know why, sorry, um. Some of these are quite expensive, and, um. So we would, we've set aside thirty-five thousand out of our budget to. Get into this, um. We are. Again, once approved, we can start immediately on the application for the grants. We'd hear back in like forty-eight hours. And, uh, we were requesting, um. ARCA funds to cover any. Offset value that we have not been able to cover either from our own budget or from the grants. Um, that are available. The, uh, the grant, uh, the matching grant funds are mainly available until late mid-October, so we would like to get moving on this, um. And as far as installation. We had discussed springtime. Um, but we can purchase it and have it delivered and kind of a site prep done. Um. In the fall here.
Do you have a preference?
We don't particularly have a preference of which piece of equipment, um. The ones we picked, we, we set our criteria and we did the research and we looked at, you know. The age ranges and stuff like that. Can little kids play on it? Can the bigger kids enjoy it, you know, stuff like that, and, um. The ones that we've brought to the board here are the ones that we've kind of set aside and we wanted to bring some options. Um, option four is just individual pieces that we picked out. Um, and those ones are not available under the, their in-house grant matching.
So number one is our showroom.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Number one.
Number four is by piece.
Yes.
So basically, you're, you're looking at, uh, option two or three.
Right.
I haven't seen them, so.
So what is Parks and Rec's recommendation? I know you're, you're giving us.
That's what I'm saying, pick one.
Pick one, okay, um. I would have to say, I think we.
We're talking Heritage, right?
Yes, Heritage Park. Um, do I correct me if I'm wrong, but I think option was found the, the committee favorite.
Yeah, we had an agreement there. I mean, we all looked at it and this is a lot of stuff to look at. As you can see all these here. Um. We'll discuss.
Please, I'm gonna have to fill that option. Um, the ARCA fund, I can tell you, uh, we have. In Michigan class invested a hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents, and in Huntington, we had nine thousand, seventy-three dollars. We have allocated forty-six thousand dollars a month for the general fund. Which is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, so that only leaves about thirty thousand, forty thousand. In the ARCA fund. And that is also, uh, already designated for the sheriff's contract.
We, we ended, we start out with two hundred and seventy. And I guess what we need to do is just to call, house, window down the area.
Well, that's what I'm telling you. That's what, I've given you the numbers right here, about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
I thought we start out with two hundred and seven.
We don't have that now.
That's what I'm asking.
We have a hundred and seventy-three thousand around there and we need a hundred and thirty-eight.
So we spent a hundred and thou-.
We need a hundred and thirty-eight for the budget and for the.
I'm saying we spent a hundred thousand before we started using it to PR bills. Is that what you're saying?
We've used it for the sheriff's contract. We used it for the floor.
That's monthly, the sheriff's contract.
Yes, so we have to have that money monthly. For the rest.
Yeah, I was saying the hundred thousand.
Not to mention that ninety-seven thousand for Spectrum and Centaurus for the equipment and installation and the services.
Yeah.
Were deducted from the ARCA fund. Technology.
What is, what is the cost for number two? What's the cost?
For number three?
Uh, we're looking at number two.
Number two, seventy-eight dollar. Seventy-eight grand.
Seventy-eight thousand and that's if we give the.
That, that's a grant, right?
That is after the grant, yes. So the, the line where it says a grant should actually be a subtraction line, not a. They have it in parentheses. I don't know why there is a. Negative symbol there, but.
So we're gonna go forty-three, we don't. Not a spam. Four, three thousand dollars.
I don't see it happening. For a simple reason, we have another seven months of general funding. You don't know what's gonna pop off.
That's seven months. That's coming in first of June, first of December.
That's money, if, if you start spending that money, unless you're billed, you don't have it for next year.
But we're gonna get, the township is gonna get a mill instead of point six-seven mill, so you're gonna get a lot more to work with this next year. It'll start coming in in December. It's still gonna take us a year to redo. And recover.
And there is still, uh, state share of revenue coming in, but we don't know when that comes in. And how much it's gonna be. It's never the same. If, I don't, I can't track it. So I can't get into it.
Yeah. Uh, what's in the capital improvement?
Thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight.
The sad thing is we got approval, Terry Starr purchased that with the village pass. All their equipment. And then he's gone and they have a people and I saw they're moving it and I called. They never got ahold of us. I talked to the head of the school and they never got ahold of us. This is three years later.
Okay, we just need to figure out if we can do this or not.
Uh, you just did a capital improvement, like, expected, um. What is the amount of that? That was the end, those from do all maintenance for thirty-six hundred, so you know, was it thirty-six? I think it was thirty-six. You had to. Deduct that from the balance.
Thirty-six, you're looking at about point five, twenty-four, or even thirty. Thirty-four.
So. Looking at this, what, the only thing that fits if we use the capital improvement fund plus their. But they say they had thirty, thirty-five. Thousand that they would dedicate to this.
Thirty-five.
So you're looking at option three. Which is sixty-five thousand.
You know, that's option two, sixty-five thousand, sir.
Option three, CWO grant.
Doesn't.
Option two, seventy-eight, bottom line is seventy-eight, two seventy-three. I'm looking at.
Option three is sixty-five, one fifty-one bias here.
Right, yeah. That one fits. Barely, but it fits.
Do both of those options meet the requirements for the, um, hundred percent match? I know.
Um, I think.
It dropped to eighty percent if it was a lower price.
Option three does appear to. Cause the, the, so the grant goes toward the purchase amount, which would be the top line there. Um, seventy-two, three, twenty-four. And I would say about half of that is thirty-six, one sixty-two. Just for some rough math. If you have the same.
Yeah, I'm not sure, cause I'm looking at a subtotal of a hundred and eighteen thousand, nine sixty-two.
That would be up to.
Okay. Oh, we're looking at three, okay. Alright, so this one was subtle.
This would be the, the purchase amount and then the grant amount is.
Oh, this is installation or you're not working at the installation?
What's that? The grant, the grant doesn't go towards installation. It goes towards the purchase price of.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. So the installation you have to cover yourself.
Well, that, that's still rolled into the bottom line total.
Okay.
Um, but the grant only is. You know, on option three.
It ranks for the, but it doesn't cover the installation.
Yes.
So the actual cost to the parks would be sixty-five hundred fifty-one, okay?
Yeah, that's.
If, if we get the grant, yes.
Right.
Which again, we don't.
But you know in two days, it would be annual, because it does. Doesn't make any difference if you don't get it.
Pretty much, yeah.
And of that sixty-five thousand.
We give you thirty-five.
You, you're looking for the township, you can, you can put thirty-five in and the township will need to cover the other thirty.
Yes.
So between.
Capital.
What's left in ARCA and what's left in capital improvement, we could probably.
Okay, so what you're looking is. Basically authorization to apply for the grant approval from the board.
Yes, and then a dedication of the remaining.
Okay.
So that if, if everything pans out and we can move forward, then we know everything is covered.
Well, you got this DNR, yeah, the DNR grant that we're waiting for for Freedom Park. We're gonna have to have a match for that too, right? If I remember right, it's like eighty thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a sizable amount. Uh, but it's not all upfront. It's, uh, overtime.
Overtime, okay, well, that's good.
Kelly, Kelly will be able to, to describe that better. She's our, our grant contact. Um, but I, I talked to her about it last week and, cause we were talking about. You know, what can we use out of our budget? And I was like, oh, we need a grant matching. She's like, no, that doesn't all have to happen.
Right, somebody needs to make a suggestion there.
Well, well, the other thing is though, too, has, has Parks and Rec considered, you know, there's landscaping involved and you gotta put down some sort of a, a soft base. You know, like there's sand down there right now.
Right.
Have, have you talked about that at all as far as cost?
As far as cost, we haven't looked into it. Um, this is, this was kind of something that's been filled upon. And, uh, with the deadlines coming up, we wanted to try to move on it quickly.
Right, so, but, but Parks and Rec realizes there's gonna be additional cost. We said it's thirty-five thousand.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
It, it doesn't have to be installed until actually your next budget, right? So you don't have to.
Yeah, I, we, I think we were looking at potentially doing like a site prep. This fall.
Okay.
And then actual installation happening in the spring is what we kind of talked about. Um, it's an, it's an ever-developing situation, um, as Kelly works with her Sinclair.
I think it's a good investment for the community.
I think it is too.
I, I make a motion that, uh, we give, uh, Parks and Recs, uh, the board's okay to approve, uh, number three. Uh, under brochure to move forward.
Uh, basically, the motion would be to, uh, approve Parks and Recreation. To apply for a grant.
Okay.
Match for. Option number three. And commit thirty-five thousand dollars to the purchase of option three equipment. The remainder coming from. The township.
Yeah, and I'll second that one.
Chicken.
Yes.
We lost you right after he said, I might.
Yeah.
More than all the other question that needs to be.
We're changing that to.
Such a big eating stomach. I mean, it's something, but it's nothing.
Um, do we need to say in there where those funds would be committed from? By the township?
No, we can deal with that if we find out they got the grant.
Oh, okay.
They have to get the grant first or it's academic.
Yeah.
We, we just have to come up with thirty-five thousand to manage theirs. Right?
Thirty, thirty, thirty for township, thirty for parks. Alright, roll call vote. Albert Peace?
Yes.
Frank Childs?
Yes.
Greg Bradley?
Yes.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Kristen Johnson, yes.
Okay, that takes care of the parks equipment.
I actually have one more. One more item. Uh, we are also requesting approval out of our own budget. Uh, to order four more of the dogway stations, um, from the dogways depot, which is where we've gotten them in the past. Um. For a total cost of six hundred and eighty dollars.
Seven five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So that's something we have to cap that by. Okay, motion to approve purchase of four dogway stations.
Right.
You're seconding that? Is that, was that your eye? Okay.
Try to get out of here.
Well, clock comes early.
Yeah, you're.
Okay, I, we'll call vote on that or. Vote, vote without any objections. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
So.
Hey, I, I'd like to make a motion. Can I do that? That means I have to move on. Uh, one of the recommendations. I appreciate what Andrew does and what helps. I'm still trying to get some paper, but he did. I'm still working on that, but he is, um.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Now, this, this is at twenty-five thousand dollar, correct?
Yeah, yes, that's what they.
That's what we're, it's a here and I.
That's what they, yeah, that's what they figured in the bucket and bucket.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion? Do you get two people to make the truth in charge? Heritage Park, the entire park, as we discussed, I'm talking about the equipment, the equipment. As far as that goes.
Who gets precedence?
Oh, who gets precedence? It's the township.
That's what, yeah.
Now, he's looking up to a minimum of twenty hour, a maximum of twenty hours a week.
No.
Okay, so if he needs the equipment.
Two hundred and sixty hours a season.
So, Miss Penny, so basically what he would have to do is coordinate with Craig over the use of the equipment. Alright, I agree with him. So, basically the equipment. Is Craig's?
Is he listening?
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure we're on the same page here.
I'm sorry, I'm more written, I'm kind of troubled.
For the equipment he needed. To maintain Heritage Park. He's got the whole park, ball fields, everything, okay? You are in charge of assigning the, the, the equipment schedule, so if he needs. You know, the lawn mower, one of those cags. Okay, he has to make sure, come to you, make sure it doesn't conflict with what you're doing. Tim.
Tim.
Okay.
If you give something to Freedom Park, he isn't able, you know, you gotta coordinate. If you're mowing Freedom Park or whatever, but we have two more.
We have two more.
Alright, understand that. If there's a conflict, maintenance takes precedence, okay? Schedule around maintenance, that, just to make that perfectly clear. Okay. Now. We have a motion in a second to hire Tim.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll vote. It's an employee.
Frank Bradley?
Yes.
Frank Childs?
Yes.
Albert Peace?
Yes.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Kristen Johnson, yes.
Hey, I'm trying to finish business. Uh, I, I wanna move that to September on under, under finished business. The thing that we need to do. Uh, the November nineteenth board meeting is gonna create some complications. Because on the nineteenth, we are of township board and on the twentieth, we're not.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to just have, we can do that at September meeting too.
Okay, I just need to know what we're looking at so I can, uh, get.
I just need to know what we're looking at, so I can, uh, get, get, the planning commission wants to get this master plan done, and we're gonna do it. Uh, well, no, we're gonna do it at the October meeting. So, no, we're, we're good.
Alright, yeah, well, the September meeting, basically what, what it is, is how to transition the power. And how we handle this where in there.
Um, I might be able to give some insight into that after the training that I go to.
Right, okay, so, basically, with that moves in September. I'm gonna add the paper.
Sounds like X slide.
For re-roofing the, uh, all garage, which is the last item on the mission. And the foyer, for the directing flash, give you, okay, so I'm waiting on responses to that, and I will bring any, any. What most, uh, you're bored at this September meeting.
No, you.
I think that's it.
No, can I insert one thing, because we've discussed. We're gonna have, Parks is gonna have to get red clay before we move that sponge. Give them the permission to get the red clay.
Hey, Parks? Parks?
We need to get red clay, get that, we can't wait another month to decide we, we can get it.
For the infield, is what you're talking about?
Do you have an idea how much red clay? I know you don't know the price.
No. But what I do need to know is, who do I talk to when I need products like this?
Parks.
I know, gentleman right there. Right there.
Yeah, they have, they have.
And you're gonna be on our committee, so it's gonna always be the. Yeah.
Okay, and anything over five hundred bucks, okay, yeah, I'll just support, but, but we could do, uh. A three-member board meeting at town hall.
But they. Go on on that right away.
So you got five hundred dollar limit to.
Right.
Emergency and anything?
Go out, yeah, through, through the parks.
Yeah, you gotta get there.
So be, be, that man right there is your checkpoint.
Other words, you need something, you need something, you ask him. Okay, if it's under five hundred bucks, and he hasn't, he hasn't, he has the money, he'll tell you to go buy.
Red clay's the best for me.
If it's over five hundred bucks, he has to ask us.
Can we get permission, cause we need the red clay, without knowing how much it is, we know it's over five hundred. Can we vote tonight to get the red clay? Maybe we should. Not delay it.
If it's less than a thousand bucks.
Maybe the board should up their. Let's say from five hundred to a thousand, so they're not running against five hundred dollars.
I don't think I'm gonna need much red clay.
Uh, we don't know, but I don't wanna wait, we wanna get it done.
I mean, apple stone is thirty bucks a yard. Okay, it's cost maybe three hundred fifty bucks to. And that's the limit, yeah, right, so.
Okay.
If you wanna raise the limit, Parks and Rec, you can move.
He just said he doesn't think he's gonna need five hundred dollars.
I don't think he's gonna need five hundred bucks, so.
I'm asking Parks and Rec.
I don't have to bring.
Is five hundred dollars the cap, is that too low? I mean, it's your budget.
You don't have to bring requests all that often, so I'm, I'm thinking it's not a big deal, but.
Look at the repair of the trailer. It, it's, it's one of those things where like, we only meet once a month. And it's usually a week and a half before your meeting, so they. Um, there are some things that we could have. Moved forward with before the, the.
I make a motion, we raise the, uh. Parks and Rec permission limit to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I would say a thousand.
I would say a thousand. Well, you already made a motion.
They're reasonable, I mean, these people know how to spend money. Just roll them out, you don't have to vote, just roll them out, and then you can make another motion.
Okay.
Uh, do I have a second on seven fifty?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Tom Backers?
Yes.
Greg Bratley?
Yes.
Albert Pease?
No.
John Tatters?
No.
Christine Johnson, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say yes.
Yes, that's, that's democratic way of thinking, you got seven hundred and fifty now. At least we can get the dog.
That was already approved.
I know, I know, six hundred dollars.
Okay. Actually, generally.
Ten thirty, or one hour. Anybody in the public?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Come to comment?
You don't wanna know my comments.
Alright.